Uh, I just don't know if it was the.
So we worked out perfect. So when we enjoy the regular meeting, go into the finance corporation.
This is our regular board meeting. A lot of pretty faces out there. Mr. Bishop, I like who you bring to back you. I'm just telling you.
You've got good backing.
You've got good backing, yes. So we would like to welcome everybody. The first thing on our agenda is a moment of silent prayer. Let the row called note minutes note that all members are present. Item one C is the reading of board team commitments and Ms. Misty is going to read those for us tonight.
Board team commitments for Rockcastle County School. To improve our effectiveness, the board team for Rockcastle County Schools commit to review processes and experiences to identify and direct improvements, continuously define and work toward long-term goals which serve all students of the district, make each decision based on facts and the best for all students, listen to each other and speak freely, work together, support each other and not surprise one another, discuss board deliberations to the point of mutually agreeable resolution based on factual information, support the majority's decision, projecting board projecting board unity towards shared goals for continuously improving district-wide student learning, operate without personal or political agendas, respect one another, agree to disagree respectfully, delegate implementation to superintendent and education team and to respectfully remind each other of these commitments.
Thank you, Misty. Item two is to adopt the agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to adopt the agenda with one additional discussion action item.
Okay.
As in unless something's been added as item five N and then I'm being review approved termination of the contract with the board attorney Theresa Callen.
And this is going to be five N?
Five N.
Does anyone have a problem with having that discussion?
I just wasn't aware. I'm not sure what's going on.
This it will be a discussion matter.
No agreement, just a discussion?
It's a discussion. I moved it to five N. If that if the agenda is approved that way and then five N will discuss and the intent is to act on the motion.
That's discussion.
That will be a yea or a nay, a vote.
Or it can be tabled, I would say.
Or it can be tabled for more discussion if that's something that needs to be done.
Okay.
Does anyone have a problem with adding that?
No.
The other thing that is on our agenda that we need to make sure that we look at is later on, we will have to recess out of our regular board meeting to enter into a special core special called finance for the district meeting in order for the selling of our bonds. So that just want to make sure that everyone is aware that that is something that we'll have to do. And also, there will be a closed session for five A for this superintendent evaluation. We will go in closed session for that. With that being done, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with that amendment?
I'll make it.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Item three A is our school showcase. This is the best part of the night. Mr. Bishop, it is all yours. Tell us about Roundstone.
Well, thank you all for for having me and having Roundstone here tonight. I do want to start with a couple of our students and I'm setting myself up for failure because I'm going to have to follow them. So I know what I'm getting into here. But first, I would like to introduce Ms. Lila Sizemore Rankin. She's going to be playing the piano and playing the Ukrainian bel carol. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Lila.
What grade is she in?
I'm third grade, so going into fourth grade.
Going into fourth grade, okay.
You can see what kind of talent we have just, you know, starting off there. And I did forget to mention that she is a third grader going into fourth grade. Our next student will be Mr. Boaz Bishop and he will be playing Sweet Home Alabama. He's also a third grader going into fourth grade. And Ms. Jennifer, will you set that chair out in front of the piano?
I love it.
You're right.
So I'm going to say it. Just throw me out. And if you have any questions for them, I know that they're probably going to leave here early. So any questions for the students?
I'd just like to say thank you. You've made our evening. You've made my day. You've made my week. This is wonderful. Thank you. We're blessed to have such talent. And I just want to encourage both of you to continue to pursue your musical talents. That's something that that's a lifelong talent that you will always have. It's something that you can always treasure and and just I'm very amazed by your talent. So thank you both for joining us tonight.
Mr. Bishop, I'd like to know, do they have any big summer plans now that school's out?
Oh.
I'm going to come in.
I hope you have a wonderful time.
Bo, any plans?
Thank you. They're wonderful.
Well, thank you all for letting them come up and they are. And I would like to give a shout out to our music teacher, Ms. Allen. She puts on a talent show every year. This year, you know, we tried to keep kids apart, you know, in their own classrooms as much as possible. So she did a virtual talent show. And so she set up a backdrop and recorded, you know, let kids try out during their class time and then our audition, I should say. And then she recorded them and put together a slideshow and the kids could all the kids could watch it during their classroom time. So and that's where I kind of come across it because I got to see see it on the slideshow. So thank you all for coming in and presenting to us. I'll change gears a little bit. I do want to spotlight the rest of our school academically. We we have done the I-ready diagnostics this year and we do it three times a year. So just to give you a little background on the I-ready testing, we did it in the fall, which I think we did it in September, and then we did a winter benchmark, which was the first of February, and then a spring benchmark, which was after testing. So that's the third week in May. And that that gives us the data to see where kids are at. And, you know, you can break it down a hundred different ways. But what I have here, and Ms. Manley, I'm going to ask you if you'll help me pass these out. I got a little packet of of information.
Was it easier to get your students to participate in that than maybe some at the higher levels?
Oh, yeah. Ours was really easy. And we only had like thirteen virtual kids. So it was as easy as just a come in when you can and I could sit at the office and let them take it. So that was that was really easy for Roundstone. So that is an appendage of smaller numbers. But if you'll look at your at your data that you're getting there, the red, yellow, and the green, students in red, those are considered are tier three students and those are students that are at highest risk. They are two grade levels or more below the level that they should be at. And then the ones in in yellow, of course, we don't identify any students, obviously, just the numbers or the percentage of kids. That's our two-tiered kids, tier-two kids, and those are one grade level behind. And kids that fall into the green category, those are on grade level or above. They could be ahead of grade level. And the way each grade level is broken down, like it's very specific. Like the first, and if you'll notice in your in your packet, there's two staple sheets together. That's your the first one would be your reading data. And then the second staple packet would be your your math. And I'm not going to go through all this. I just wanted you to have it if you, you know, if you're up late at night and you need something to read, you have some of this data that you can kind of go through. What I really want to look at is our growth. And if you'll notice that the the first triangle on the first page, the bright one, it says most recent. So it's the most recent test that the kid took, which almost every kid obviously would be our spring or May data. Now, there may be a kid that moved in or a kid that left and it might skew the numbers just a little bit, but that is ninety-eight percent of our kids took, you know, the one in the fall and the one in the spring. And that's the two that I'm comparing. The one that's lightly colored, that's the fall benchmarks scores. So you can see there, just in the triangle, you can see we have a lot more green than we do in in the most recent, which would be May versus when they came in, you know, when the doors opened and it's, you know, September and they're taking this test. And we actually went from twenty-three percent of our students being on grade level to fifty-three percent of our students in reading. So, you know, a great turnaround there. And then it's broken down by grade level, too. And I'm not going to go grade level by grade level. But if everybody would just look at the kindergarten, for example, look at our fall. We had nine percent of our kids that were on grade level, you know, reading grade level. And then whenever May, the, you know, the twenty-eighth, when they walked out, we had seventy-one percent on grade level. Obviously, we don't have any red because you can't be two grade levels behind kindergarten. You're just getting started. But you can still be on grade level or not on grade level. And then that kind of shows you the kind of growth that we had at Roundstone Elementary. And I promise you, I did not know that one of our second grade teachers, well, actually, two of our second grade teachers are over here right now. But our our second grade, we have a very large second grade. We have, you know, several kids in that in that class that have some special needs and things like that. And and Ms. Rogers, our librarian, stepped up and took, because our numbers were so big and, you know, we had to separate kids and keep them socially distant in the beginning. And she took over and took a class of kids. And and if you'll look at the second grade, you can see there, we again, we had eleven percent that were on grade level and now we have thirty thirty-six percent. And the biggest, the greatest thing about our third grade level is almost half of our kids were two grade levels or more below. And now we're down to one out of five. So, you know, that one one growth, you know, we're taking those kids that are two grade levels behind and and at least they're in the mid in the middle in the yellow or better. And so that that is our goal as as a school is next year. You know, we had this in our tool belt now. We kind of know how it works. So when we get this data, like we already have it. And I will say this, we have twenty-nine students that have it that are at least two grade levels behind in math or reading. Some of them are are both. And we have seven of those coming to summer school right now. We obviously, we asked all of them, we asked ninety different kids to come to summer school. We've been having in the forties, forty-five of them or so. But we have seven of the twenty-nine that are in red coming to summer school. So I'm hoping when we start back that we we won't have that they won't be in the red. And that's what we're hoping. So we're going to use this diagnostic and this ability to do this to, you know, identify these kids and we can, you know, pull them out, do small groups. And that's kind of what my next talking point is, is how Roundstone, how we have used our RPI time. And we were fortunate enough that we had an instructional assistant that was an RPI, you know, had an RPI background. And for probably up until November or so, every day she was pulling kindergarteners, pulling first graders, working on them and, you know, reading, working on just knowing identifying their ABCs, whatever it might be, wherever they fell out, she grouped them together. Then she went on bedrest. She was pregnant and she missed the rest of the going home and swimming's great, playing Little League's great, going on vacation's great, but if you're not reading and you're not writing.
Are we able to help them with transportation?
No, we are not doing transportation at the elementary level. No. But, I mean, and we do have, we do have a handful of kids that can't come because of that and it might be seven or eight names that I had that can't come because of that. But, you know, we sent ninety-three letters out, got fifty-two responses back and we had forty-two or forty-five, somewhere in there, come back. And so that's kind of our blueprint of how our summer school is gonna be, two days a week. And really, it's from, we do it from nine to two and many of y'all have probably been to vacation Bible school from nine o'clock until, what, Ms. Rogers, eleven-thirty? It's academic time. You know, we, she's helping with summer school. We are doing academics and then we have lunch and a recess and then we do an art project the last hour, fifteen minutes or so of the day and try to hype them up to come back the next day. Because, you know, they are seven, eight-year-old kids and a lot of younger kids. And that's our biggest population are the kindergarten, first grade, second grade age kids. So, and, you know, that is my idea as we go into next, into the fall, obviously, we're gonna have a full-time RTI specialist in our building. So that's gonna be a plus for us. It is a teacher that we, it was a Roundstone teacher, so that's a plus for us because she's gonna be familiar with our school, our students, how we work down there. And then, you know, I'm gonna try to build embed that, you know, twenty or twenty-five minutes a day into our, into our daily schedule, kind of how we did this year with, you know, we put that RTI bubble, I think I called it, you know, where every day, every adult in the building, at a certain time, kids go, you know, like I had, I had fourth grade, I know there's a parent here, I had her son in my RTI group at the end of the day and he was in the enrichment group, you know, I had fourth graders, I had five, five fourth graders. And no, they weren't struggling in reading, but so what did we do? We were like writing stories and doing these brain, you know, activities with them for twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes each day. And they loved it, every kid, you know, they knew where to go after the second day and they lined up and they would get there and then when Ms. Michelle, our secretary, would say dismiss, back to class, they were hustling back to class. And I really think all of that, along with the RTI all year, you know, helps our numbers. And I don't know what to compare this to, but I know whenever I see seventy-one percent on the grade level now versus nine when they came in, then it really fires me up to think that what we, where we're gonna start at next year. I know there's a lot of words in just a few minutes.
I'll take just a second to brag on Mr. Bishop because he, this was just his idea. This was his thought. I want my kids with me two days a week in the summer, you know, and being willing to know his school population and to know what would work there. You know, some of our elementary schools are doing week-long academies, but he knows Roundstone and he knows his kids and he knows what would be effective. So I just want to brag on the work that he's done and really, this diagnostic, this is phenomenal. I'm really, really proud, not only of you, but of our Roundstone teachers.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody there because if you think of, you know, we had five first days of school this year. And we, you all were able to accomplish this work with everything we've been through in a global pandemic. So I commend Roundstone Elementary. I commend you and all of your teachers and your staff. I mean, you've done phenomenal work.
Well, thank you. And, you know, and we focused on reading the majority of the year, but we saw that, you know, great turns in math as well. And that's something, too, that we would like to add some math RTI and don't know what that'll look like, but it'll fall into line with our, with our reading RTI as well.
Mr. Bishop, what was your enrollment number at the end of the school year?
Two forty-three, I think. I might be off one. It could be two forty-two, but I think two forty-three, counting preschool.
So that is counting your preschool numbers?
And we had a, we had a pretty low preschool for normal, you know, for our normal year. And we have a really large second grade classes. I think there's forty-six in that class and that's pretty large for us. We get a forty-five or above. And we do have a small fourth grade class, so I think once they're going into fifth grade this year, once they cycle through, our numbers will start bumping back up.
How many homeroom classes do you have?
Two, two per grade level. And we had three third grade, I mean, three second grade classes because Ms. Rogers, you know, she stepped out of the library for a year so we could, you know, we knew we had forty-six and we couldn't put twenty-three and get them all in a classroom and be six feet apart. So we divided that into three and did that. And that helped that class because there was so many needs in that, in that class. And of course, now with a few holdbacks in that class that we, that are gonna repeat second grade and that'll even our numbers back out a little bit. So we'll be at two at each grade level.
Mr. Bishop, talking about the holdback and the conversation today, it's still, we still have the same conversation we did years ago, the end of another year in primary. I mean, do we feel better about that, do those students and their parents feel better about that opportunity? I mean, because really you need to be at level or somewhere really close to it when you exit elementary school, when you leave third grade, primary.
And, you know, that's something, looking at this, that I found like we had phenomenal growth in the K-one and two ages. Once you get to third, fourth, and fifth, they don't grow, you know, it's hard to close that gap, harder to close that gap. And, yeah, I think parents really, you know, there's not a stigma to it now that, oh, my kid failed. You know, now, we, and we try to sell it to them, like, hey, this is an opportunity for your, for your student to, they just, they need that extra year. Sometimes it's an age thing, sometimes it's a maturity thing. And, you know, you give them that extra year to have that, you know, have that opportunity and have that growth.
And in addition to that, for the folks that really enjoy athletics, you know, we have some folks that like to play ball, various sports. It's an advantage to get a little bit older as well. And of course, I encourage, four years on end and it's not what I did and I did the wrong thing with my kids. They were all younger members of their class. But I feel like to the ones that we can, and there's an exception for all, but I think the older you can make your child, if I was talking to a parent, would be, either keep them out or give them additional year because they need all the maturity they can have when they leave high school. That's my feeling. And I think I could probably even find some research to back that up.
Yeah, and my research is probably just looking at myself. Like, you know, I was an eighteen-year-old freshman. What would I have been like if I was a nineteen-year-old freshman? And, you know, I could only imagine that maybe the mistakes I made, I wouldn't have made.
And then one other comment, and I'll hush. Hyped them up, caught that. And of course, in that, and I know you do, I know you do it Roundstone, I think everyone else attempts to do that, too, but we need to keep them hyped up. We talked a little bit about that, maybe didn't use that term because we need to make kids excited about coming to school for lots of reasons. And if they're, and they really, I guess they need a double shot of it for summer school because not many want to come in summer, but that same practice carries over into the regular school year, too.
Yeah, I think, you know, we had a, me and Ms. Brown, our counselor, had a conversation about, do we start at eight o'clock or do we start at nine o'clock? And I'm an early bird, I would have started at eight o'clock. And she's like, I have to give them that extra hour. And it's really helped because we're not necessarily giving the kids that extra hour or we're giving the parents that extra hour. And that does make a difference and I think that that has helped us tremendously, that it's that time, you know, doesn't seem like much, but it does make a difference. And hyping them up, like when they're leaving, like even when summer school was going on and they were staying that extra hour, fifteen minutes. And I didn't even mention, not summer school, but ESS. I didn't even mention we had done an ESS program, you know, and worked on, done Tuesdays and Thursdays for, I don't know, it's probably six or eight weeks of doing that. And kids, when they were leaving, it was going on five o'clock and they were like, I can't wait to be back tomorrow, you know? And so that's important to us, but it's really important to them, to have them motivated to come back to school.
I think you're building confidence.
Yeah, I do, too.
And I think that they're at that age that if they struggle and they fail, they start playing themselves against their peers.
And can I give you an example? I just saw today, not lying to you, and I know everybody in here is an educator, so they'll understand this, but Ms. Imanjean, which is a kindergarten teacher, she's doing summer school, she's got six or seven kids in line with her and some of them are struggling with different things, obviously. They've been learning just their psych, I mean, their letters, not even words. When they're coming down the hallway at one fifty-eight, they get ready to go outside, I mean, to get away after parent pickup at the end of the day, and she's teaching them the days of the week. Like, we think that, you know, these kids probably should know it. And they're not just kindergarten kids because we have group, ability group them some. So some of them are a little bit older and they're still learning their days of the week. But, you know, when one little student that was standing right next to my office, when he made it through and he got all seven days right by himself, he was fired up.
I'm hearing you. You're building confidence.
She gives him a pat on the head and a little hug and like he is as happy as he can be. He's been there all day, he knows the days of the week. He got them right. You know, and tomorrow, we'll do them again and make sure, you know? Just things like that matters.
Very much.
You don't realize what type of influence or impact you're making sometimes, you know?
Yeah, you kind of can't see, you wonder what the saying is, the forest for the trees or whatever.
Trees, yeah.
You know, we're right in the middle of it. And I think that goes probably for all educators and all principals and all people in our, in our shoes, that, you know, we're right in the middle, we're shoveling as fast as we can and we don't realize the hole that we're digging, not that we're going down, but, you know.
And you're always being watched. Little ones, you know, they're sponges, they take up everything and I know like for my own daughter, she can tell me what everybody had on at church when she leaves, you know, if they're, I mean, and she notices everything. And I'm just like, really? Did that really happen? I mean, you know, and she's like, yeah, Mom, you didn't see it? And I'm like, no, I didn't. So, you know, I've always, the little ones have always just triggered, you know, something close in my heart. They're little sponges, they just take it all in.
And that's the truth because, again, I keep bringing up this iReady data and I'm not for sure how valid it'll be over time, but it's really good for what we're doing right now. Like, you know, how much school they missed March of last year, all the way through. And we thought, man, they're gonna be super far behind. Well, they were, they were really far behind, but how fast they caught up was really amazing to me. Because, you know, like I said, the seventy-one percent versus nine percent, like they're sponges. And if we're there and they're in front of a good teacher, it matters and it goes a long ways. And that's what Roundstone has. You know, we have a good teacher in every classroom, you know, in the nurses' station and every special ed class and the, you know, cleaning the restrooms. Everybody's a good teacher at Roundstone.
You know, I think I told you this once before, I've always held a very soft spot for Roundstone. And I think that, you know, I was a Livingston school person, you know, years ago, and I think Roundstone always reminded, you're all, you have a very close relationship, you can tell, a close-knit family relationship. And I've just always really loved that school. You know, I've always, I've never heard anything negative about Roundstone. I think that the layout of your school and everything just seems so, it just seems like a dream, like for a principal, because you can see down both hallways. I mean, I just, I've always just been very impressed by Roundstone.
It is, that's nice, you know, when you can see that. Had a gentleman several years ago come by to drop off something for me at school and, you know, he's a, he's a community member here in town, has a business here in town. He's dropping something off. He's like, man, you've got the greatest job ever. He said, I walked in, I saw one class go by and he said, we never settle apart. He just saw, it was quiet, so it was good, you know? Yeah, you just wait. Really, really a great place. But any other questions? I know we're all ready to move on.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you to your children that you brought.
Yes, they, they made it. Please come back.
Next month, second Tuesday of the month.
Learn a new song. I won't let them go.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you all.
I'm gonna step and fix my computer.
Yeah, mine's down, too. Mine's shut down.
Do that while we transition. I think that seeing our children come to our board meetings makes, makes everything just a little bit better. It puts things into focus a whole lot, doesn't it? Yes. The next thing on our agenda tonight is our superintendency capstone project presentation. Ms. Ballinger is gonna be doing a presentation and would you?
Absolutely. So that's part of this, actually, so we'll go into this. Thank you all, to everybody that's here tonight. I very much appreciate the support and everybody coming out to participate and watch this presentation. This is, for those of you that don't know, at the end of every superintendent's first year in their superintendency, you have to present a capstone project that kind of shows or demonstrates what you have accomplished during this school year. So this is going, this project is going to be about, a lot about superintendent standards and a lot, I'm gonna have to say "I" a lot. And that's really uncomfortable for me, like very, very uncomfortable for me because this is a team effort. There is nothing that gets accomplished in Rockcastle County schools without an entire team. And that means the Board of Education, that means principals, that means classified staff, that means bus drivers, that means teachers, that means everybody. We are a team. So I'm gonna be talking about a lot of things and maybe these things were my ideas and maybe these are things that I wanted to see go into motion for Rockcastle County schools, but none of this would have ever happened without our central office team, without our administrators, without our teachers. So this is a complete team effort. So this is a celebration. This is not only a celebration of the work that we have accomplished this year, this is a celebration of our entire school district. To look back and take time to reflect, it's very beneficial to see where we started to where we ended this year and to see all the great things that have taken place. So with that, we'll get started, Jamie. Okay, so first I just want to thank a few people. I want to start off by thanking the Rockcastle County Board of Education for trusting me and hiring me to serve as the superintendent of Rockcastle County Schools. I'm very blessed, feel very honored to have this position, feel very honored and blessed to be able to serve our community and our students. The students, families, and staff of Rockcastle County Schools for trusting me. You know, the students, that's what we're here for. That's what every single person in this room is here for, our kids. And if we can just always remember that it's all about our kids. Every decision we make has to be about what is best for the students of Rockcastle County Schools. And the Rockcastle County District Office staff, I will argue with anybody from Western Kentucky to Eastern Kentucky, from north to south, that I have the best district office staff anywhere. Not, we would not have survived the global pandemic and what we have done had it not been for these people. So I just want to stop for just a second and ask you guys to clap for them because they're the hardest-working, most dedicated people that I know. And along with that is our administrators. You know, our school leaders, you just heard from Mr. Bishop, amazing. We are blessed. In every single school, we have phenomenal administrators. So thank you, Mr. Bishop, for being here tonight and showing everybody what Roundstone's about. And then I'd like to thank KASA, Dr. Fred Carter, Ms. Talora Schlosser, and my superintendent cohort. They're wonderful. My cohort is wonderful. Being able to make those connections from people all over the state, that I can pick up the phone, I mean, I was receiving some text messages right before I started, good luck tonight, I hope it goes great. These are friendships and relationships that I've developed with people all over the state. Very, very thankful for that and I know that those are relationships that I'll carry into the future with me. And lastly, I just want to thank my family. So first I just want to thank a few people. I want to start off by thanking the Rockcastle County Board of Education for, um, trusting me and, and hiring me to serve as the superintendent of Rockcastle County Schools. I'm very blessed. Feel very honored to have this position, feel very honored and blessed to be able to serve our community and our students. Um, the students, families and staff of Rockcastle County Schools for trusting me. You know, the, the students, that's what we're here for. That's what every single person in this room is here for, our kids. And if we can just always remember that it's all about our kids. Every decision we make has to be about what is best for the students of Rockcastle County Schools. And the Rockcastle County District Office staff, I, I will, will argue with anybody from Western Kentucky to Eastern Kentucky, from north to south, that I have the best district office staff anywhere. Not, we would not have survived the global pandemic and what we have done had it not been for these people. So I just want to stop for just a second and ask you guys to clap for them because they're the hardest working, most dedicated people that I know. And along with that is our administrators. You know, our school leaders, you just heard from Mr. Bishop, amazing. We are blessed. In every single school, we have phenomenal administrators. So thank you, Mr. Bishop, for being here tonight and, and showing everybody what Roundstone's about. Um, and then I'd like to thank K A S A, Dr. Fred Carter, Ms. Talora Schlosser, and my superintendent cohort. They're wonderful. My cohort is wonderful. Um, being able to make those connections from people all over the state, that I can pick up the phone. I mean, I had, was receiving some text messages right before I started, good luck tonight, I hope it goes great. These are friendships and relationships that I've developed with people all over the state. Very, very thankful for that. And I know that those are relationships that I'll carry into the future with me. And lastly, I just want to thank my family. Um, as all of you know, being a superintendent is difficult. It's a hard job and it's, it's a job that you have to be one hundred percent dedicated to twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. You don't go home and get to say, oh, I think I'll just turn this off for a little while. Doesn't work that way. And my family is of full support of me being here and I, I thank them. So tonight, um, we, I just met previously just across the, the street with my individual leadership plan team or my I L P team. And so they're here with me tonight. Dr. Fred Carter is here, Ms. Talora is here, and Ms. Angie Mink represented, um, our school board on this team. So I thank them for the support that they've shown me this year. Always know that I can pick up the phone and call and I appreciate that very much, so. Okay, so what is leadership? You'll go back for it, Ms. Jamie. There we go. What is leadership? Leadership in my mind is service. It's really nothing else. You're serving. Does that mean you're, you're serving students first? You're serving families, you're serving your community, you're serving your teachers? Serving classified staff, you're serving bus drivers, you are serving. So leadership to me is service. And I thought, as I was planning for this capstone project, you know, I asked people in the central office staff, you know, what do you think leadership is? You know, just to get their input. And then as we started discussing it, we said, you know, let's ask our kids. Because again, everything we do is about who? Kids. So we created a video for you all. It's, it's a lo- it's a little long, I, 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 but I couldn't cut it because it was wonderful. So it's about seven minutes, but thi- these are the words of our Rockcastle County School students. This is what they have to say about the school system that we are leading. This is their input. I don't know anybody else that's more important to hear from. Brandon, if you don't appear to play that for us.
I believe that a good leader is someone that takes into account everyone's opinions and what is going to impact everyone in a positive way. It's not someone who just makes decisions based off of their own opinions or their own ideals. They look at the bigger picture and see what is going to make a positive impact in the lives of everyone they are serving.
I, I think a good leader, um, is helping others. We are help kids are first key.
A leader is someone who is a servant to their peers and they are an encourager of other people to not just walk behind them, but beside them. And just, um, continue going forward into like being a leader as a team.
A leader is someone who puts their team members first, who delegates tasks to each team member effectively, and someone who watches out for them, and someone who takes care of their subordinates and not just push them aside and tell them what to do. They ask for opinions for them to become better leaders.
A good leader is somebody like stands up for what they believe in and fights what they think is right. And somebody that has to get over the fact that other people are going to disagree with it. And I think that, that, and I think that she has showed, Carrie Ballinger, has showed that because like there are the parents that have completely disagreed with the M R O and the way they've handled things with COVID. And like she's still stood by what she thought was right because she cares about the students like that.
I think the hardest thing that a leader has to deal with really is they're held to a higher standard than somebody who looks up to them. So you have all sorts of eyes on you all the time and a leader has to like wake up every morning and then just be that example and be the higher standard that people want, want them to be.
Like if a leader is in a tough situation, you should always, um, put like other people's suggestions first and see what they want to do instead of you just being, I want to do that and I want to do this, just take other suggestions.
I also think leaders in a tough situation should like calm down and try to find a solution.
Um, some really big issues that, uh, like leaders face in their everyday lives is people like obviously disagreeing with their choices in their leadership. I mean, nobody's, not everybody's going to completely agree with everybody and that's a given. But like a leader is more disagreed with than anybody else among settling their own disputes, they have to settle others as well. So I mean, it's just problem after problem for a leader and the fact that, uh, you have to be resilient for it and she is.
I've seen both students and teachers and administration step up. I mean, I feel like everybody has really, um, worked their hardest this year. Um, students and their schoolwork and their extracurriculars and then teachers and administration to give us the best school year possible that we can have. Especially like during the global pandemic, they've still been able to like make our learning successful, which I really appreciate it.
I have one teacher and she thought of not just the students in person, but the students of my rock mine. Say all the extra hours that the teachers and administrators had put in just to make sure the school years went on. And it's been really successful and I know that I've learned a whole lot, a whole lot more than expected really during the pandemic.
I would say that throughout the school year, it's just been easy for me to see that the teachers, the staff, the administration, they genuinely care about us. Like even during times when we didn't have school, I had a teacher who was like giving me books to take home with me and read so that I could continue reading even when I was learning at home. And I've had countless other experiences that were similar to that, where my teachers, despite going home and not being in the school building, were still trying to continue my traditional education that I would have in years past. And I have just very much, I really appreciate that.
I can say that this year, the teachers, the connections that you've been making or that we make have just been totally different. But they have been so much just, it's just so much better for everyone this year with the connections we've made.
And going off of that, I feel like all of the teachers and staff have done a really good job of keeping us motivated because especially whenever we were online, I know that motivation was really hard to come by. And I feel like they've done a really good job of just keeping positive throughout it all.
And I think that like some of the connections that we've made this year are going to follow us seniors into college with us.
And not only that, but like even with the storm hit, they were reaching out trying to make sure everyone had.
Yeah, and off what you said, like even during like the ice storm, like they were still making sure that people were fed, were clothed, had a warm place to stay. Like even the warming set that they had at the middle school, I think that was a great thing. Because here, the administrators, the teachers, this community has put together a place where people of the community can go and get warm and get fed. Because ultimately, it's about school and it's about education, but outside of that, it goes far beyond that. It goes to the connections that you make with the people of your community. And that speaks so much louder than just, you know, the traditional school setting. It goes far beyond that.
And I think our teachers have really understood, I mean, they have in years past as well, but especially this year, that our education is important. But so is our, our needs, our social needs. And, you know, we see that, um, like being online, that's, that's hard. So, you know, maybe they adapt by doing a cool meet where you can still talk to your peers or just different things. And they're trying to engage us still because they've realized that, yes, we are here to learn, we're also here because this is where we spend most of our time. This is, this is like our life. And so they've really like understood that.
Yeah, I, I think for me, it, it's really good to know that everybody, like you come to school and your teachers, it's a, it's a good environment. It's a really personal environment. And I think that's something you get at Rockcastle that you may not get anywhere else.
Um, so Carrie Ballinger was my first grade teacher when I lived in Berea. So it was kind of weird when I seen her not too long ago and she was like, oh, I'm your superintendent, so I'm going to be heading here to Boma. Because she knew me when I was so little and now she watched me grow and you're what I am to be now. And, uh, I just, I don't remember a lot because I was so young, but I do remember that she cared about her students. Like that's all I can remember is how much she cared about her students. And she made it so clear that she would be there no matter what for every student she could be.
That's leadership. That's our kids. That's what it's about. That's why we're all here tonight is to talk about this. But hearing those and hearing the words from our students and our high school students, I can't help but feel just an overwhelming sense of pride. You know, it was a global pandemic. Look what we accomplished. Look what we had done. And just going back to Mr. Bishop's comments about that student growth, I mean, that's phenomenal. But those kids are okay. You know, they have gone through a global pandemic, something that none of us have ever experienced before and something that I hope and pray none of us ever experience again. But they've grown, not only academically, but socially. And to think about how well spoken they are and that, that our Rockcastle County school system has contributed to that, something that we should all be really, really proud of and, and I am. So here it is. This is my why. Why do you get up? Why do you get up in the morning and do what you do? You know, that's a question that we all need to reflect on very often. Why, why do you work late at night? Why do you work on the weekends? Why do you come to school early or stay late? That's it. It's all about our students. Every single decision that Rockcastle County School makes is about our kids. And these are just a few pictures of, of, of activities and events that I've had the privilege of being a part of this year. Um, I will say my favorite might be the, the one there in the middle that I have the blue mask on. I was at a preschool at Broadhead and they determined that I had a brain tumor. I think it was a body tumor, of something really, really bad. And they were, you know, I, they, they, those kids, and I think Ms. Wendy was with me and she had a hippo in her belly. So, you know, it's all about being a part of kids. And, and, and Ms. Cynthia Rogers is here tonight, um, and I will say that I've spent a lot of time in her classroom this year. Love, love, love those second grade students. And, and I think that's, at the bottom left is the last day of school and I've been going in her classroom quite a bit. And, and that's the love. And, and, and I do, I love our students. I love our kids. From high school kids to elementary kids to preschool kids, um, it's all about our kids. And, um, I will say that top left picture was one of my favorite days this year. I had the privilege to ride a bus route. Um, wonderful. It was great. It was a wonderful experience. And, and I learned a lot from this little sweet preschooler in this picture and, and, and she, she taught me the ropes of riding the bus, um, to, towards Brush Creek. So it was a great experience. So why are we here? What's the purpose of this capstone project? So as a superintendent, I have to incorporate standards into a one-year action document. So I have one year to demonstrate my learning and my proficiency in these standards. Um, it provides an opportunity for me to examine my growth areas and also my personal strengths. All of us are really great at some things. All of us need to grow in other things. So this is an opportunity to examine that. Also an, an opportunity to examine that as a district. And I'm going to talk a lot about that because I have focused a huge amount of time and energy on strategic planning and looking at our district and trying to determine, where do we go from here? How do we grow? How do we get better? Because all those little pictures that you just saw on the previous slide, that's why we get better. That's why we work so hard. So we owe them. We owe them our dedication to improving every single day. And then it also creates a framework for personal and district growth. So here's an overview. Um, I'm going to be talking about each one of those standards briefly. And then I'm going to provide evidence of my performance in each of these standards. And then I'm going to talk about next steps. Because professional growth to me is one of the most important keys to education. We cannot become stagnant. I can't become stagnant. Teachers cannot become. None of us can. We have to grow because we owe that to our kids to get better. So standard one is str- strategic leadership. So like you just heard me mention, we have spent a lot of time in Rockcastle County schools this year doing the strategic planning process. Our school board has been a part of that. Our principals have been a part of that. We've had parents that are here tonight that have been part of that. Our district office staff. We've had community members being a part of that. So it is all stakeholders. Because just like if you'll think back just for a moment to what those kids said, a leader doesn't just do what they want to do. A leader gets input from everyone. And that's what we've done. We, we included all of these stakeholders. Because you know what? If it's just Carrie Ballinger's idea and nobody's behind it and nobody agrees with it, it's not going to go very far. So we have to use everyone. We have to, we have to value everyone's opinion. And, and that's what we've done with this strategic planning process. So Ms. Jamie, if you'll go forward, we'll talk a little bit about that. So evidence for standard one proficiency. So I have developed an individual growth plan and in the next slide, we're going to look at that. And those are areas that I wanted to grow myself. So this isn't not, this is not necessarily growth areas for the district, but this is growth areas for myself. Where did I feel like I needed to grow? Also developed a thirty, sixty, ninety day plan. And I will say, Dr. Carter, when I first had to start creating that, I was, I wasn't too happy about it. I thought, gosh, this is a lot of work. But you know what? It held me accountable. And every one of us has to have something to be held accountable to. And after doing that, I just went ahead and continued and made it one twenty and then made it one fifty because that keeps me on track. And if I'm on track, then I'm able to lead and I'm able to lead with a vision. Um, I've also created this strategic planning team that I've referenced, um, several, several, um, times. I was told, that's too much to tackle this year. Don't do that. Our kids deserve it. It's never too much to tackle if it's going to guide us. And that's what this planning is about. So as part of that planning, we created a vision. How many of you all can really operate without a vision in your life? We had to have it. We didn't have a clear vision before we started. We created a mission. We determined what are our values? Like, why do we do what we do? What are our values? What are our core beliefs? And what are the parameters that we're going to work within? And then after we have done all of that, and you all can imagine pulling all those stakeholders in and getting all those opinions, it's been a lot of work to decipher through and, and to come to a point that we can all agree on, this is what Rockcastle County School stands for. This is who we are. We can go anywhere in the state and they can ask us. This is what we are. This is who we are. And then we have completed an internal SWOT analysis. Now SWOT stands for what are our strengths? What are we really good at? What are our weaknesses? What are our opportunities for growth? And then what are our threats? Like what, what's, what's our barrier? What's holding us back? And we've used all of that from all department heads and they've done a lot of work to determine all of that. And then, then we're using that to guide us in our planning. So professional growth plan. If you can ask any of our principals, any of our district office staff, um, they've all created professional growth plans this year as well. Because if we don't grow and if we don't focus our growth, you know, are we really, are we really holding up to our responsibility? So my professional growth plan, I wanted to tackle human resource leadership this school year. Ms. Jamie, if you'll scroll down just a little bit. Going right there, and collaborative leadership. And those were both really important areas for me because I knew in the human resource leadership, um, division that we really needed to focus on having a solid evaluation plan across the district. That was something that, that we had been lacking in the district that I knew. And again, I keep talking about professional growth, but I wanted everybody, not just our teachers, but our administrators, our district office staff, everybody to look at, how can I get better? And so I re- I've tackled that. Jamie, do you care to scroll back up to the top for me? Um, we've looked at, at that and establishing that. Um, so implementing a, a leadership evaluation system, implementing professional growth plans for everyone. We've looked at the TEL survey. We've looked at working conditions. And all of that goes back to getting better. Using survey data, that's really important. Finding out, it doesn't matter what Carrie Ballinger thinks, it matters what Roundstone teachers think. It matters what our parents think. It matters what our district office thinks. We have to have everybody's input to be successful. Uh, we created a new teacher cadre this year. And how exciting is that? You know, our new teachers, our brand new teachers, it is a pandemic. They're a first year teacher and they walk in a classroom. I can remember being a first year teacher. I sure would not have wanted to be, do it during a pandemic. Scary times. So we created a cadre. We brought them in. We worked with them. Our district office staff worked with them. We gave them resources. We gave them guidance, something I'm really proud of. Um, national board certification, you all might hear me talk a lot about that. I am a national board certified teacher. It was the most important thing I ever did for my career, the most important thing I ever did for my students. I became better because I devoted time to that. So we started working through our K Y C L grant of creating a cadre of teachers that would go in that direction, that would. that would go in that direction, that would get better for their kids. And collaborative leadership. Goodness, working with our community, working with other people, how vital is that? We have to be able to partner with Rockcastle Regional Hospital. We have to be able to partner with our city government. We have to be able to partner with our local law enforcement. We have to do that with our library, pulling all of those stakeholders in. Because what happens when we do that? Our kids benefit. It's about them benefiting. So just a few, um, actions that I've taken to demonstrate that. Some of you all will recall way back when in, in July, when we were trying to figure out how to open school, we created some, some task force groups and we used all of our stakeholders. And lots of you that are in this room were a part of that work. It was important. It got, it gave us buy-in. It gave us help. It gave us support from everybody. How can we do this? And how can we do it so it serves all members of our community? We've partnered with E K U, um, to provide some professional development. I've participated in multiple community and state speaking opportunities. One thing that we have done is we joined K E D C, which is an educational cooperative. It's given our teachers so many opportunities that they didn't have before, before. Um, I've, I've made an effort to participate in local civics groups. I, I do go to the Kiwanis Club, um, meetings every Thursday. Um, have just become a member of the Chamber of Commerce. So being very active in our community is very important. Jamie, we can go to the next slide. And if you'll look, oh, Jamie, go back real, there, there is a tweet and I will say that, um, and I celebrate Rockcastle County Schools every single opportunity that I get. Because we have to be proud of our community. So this is a tweet that I made. Despite COVID-19, Rockcastle County Schools is finding ways for our staff to grow. Thank you. And that's Matt Whitaker and Hannah Laswell. You know, they came in and did Google presentations and to Mr. Coker, he is always was reminding us of the value of empathy in a digital world. And we all held on to that all year long. Okay, 30, 60, 90 day plan. You all just heard me talk about that. I really believe in that quote, "He who fails to plan is planning to fail." You have to have a roadmap, have to know where you're going. So that 30, 60, 90 day plan was what that was for me. That helped guide me. I knew. First 30 days of my superintendency, I had to accomplish all of this. Within 60 days, I had to do this. Within 90 days, I had to do this. And then I just continued that. And this is something that I will continue to utilize because it keeps me accountable. And I'm not going to take time to read through every bit of that. It's pages of information. But if you will, maybe Jamie, just scroll down to standard two. So if you'll look at that, establishing some PLC meetings, that's so important. Virtual online school platform. Who would have ever thought that's what you would have to do in your first 30 days? But we did it and we tackled it, um, and we tackled it and we tackled it with lots of success. Creating a district-wide NTI plan, that seems like ages ago. But if you all will think about that, we weren't an NTI district at the beginning. We had to apply for that. We had, and we had to develop that program. Um, we had to realign our standards. All of our teachers had to pull that work in and realign from March to May of last year. What were we going to teach when the doors opened in August? We had to really think about that and do that work. Um, we, we developed NTI lessons for Google Classroom. We, we worked on Google certification. We provided professional development for that. We've created literacy teams, district level teams, school level teams. All kinds of growth has taken place in this district, all kinds of instructional growth. And it is all focused on getting better. And if you think about it, what's the best way? If you want a student instruction to improve, you start with your teachers. And you work with your teachers because we all know the impact that a classroom teacher has on a student. It's not me. It's not Ms. Mattingly. It's not Jamie. It's not Mr. Repper. It's not us doing that work. It's our classroom teachers. We have to be devoted to our classroom teachers and give them every single tool that we can give them to be successful. We can go on, Jamie, to the next slide. Okay, so that vision, I talked about that, that strategic planning that we've been doing. So rocket learners to rocket leaders. That's what we want in Rockcastle County Schools. We want to take our learners and we want to turn them into leaders. So that's our vision. That's what we stand for. That's what we're going to do. And again, you can see the best part of my day is when I get to be in classrooms or be in schools. It's so much better for me than being in central office. And, and it's, it's grounding and it's important and it brings you back to why you do what you do. It's to turn our kids from rocket learners to rocket leaders. Okay, and our mission. So I'm going to read this and I just really want you all, as I read this, to think about what this means to you. If you're a parent, what does that mean for your child? What does this mean for you as an educator? The mission of Rockcastle County Schools is to be a unifying force in our community. To educate, encourage, and empower the whole child to be a lifelong learner and leader in a global society. That's something that I can get behind. That's something that I can promote. That's something that I can encourage and that's something that I can value. Educate, encourage, and empower. You know, I have a daughter who's a, who will be a junior, junior when she graduates. If Rockcastle County Schools has educated her, encouraged her, and empowered her, I'm going to be a happy, happy mother. But this is something that I can really promote. And I thank our strategic planning team for coming up with this work, for this. Okay, our values. What do we value? Rockcastle County Schools values respect, teamwork and collaboration, honesty, commitment, integrity, and responsibility. I want my child to go to school somewhere that, that, that values this, that this is their values. This is what they stand for. Because when they leave and they graduate and they go to the workforce or they go to college or they go to the military, this, they will take this experience with them. If they have gone to school every day and been respected, if they've demonstrated teamwork, if they know that their teachers and everybody in the school system is committed to them, they're going to be successful in life. And I will say this is a picture. It's always, it's one of my favorite pictures of Brandon. And he is, you know, but look, that's teamwork and collaboration. And I can't tell you, that table has been well loved this year. And there has been a lot of planning that's taken place around that table. And again, and it's because everybody, every day is committed to getting better for kids. So our strategic planning team also came up with core beliefs. So what, what are we? Who are we? We believe that every student will learn to the fullest potential when provided a safe and positive learning environment, caring and nurturing adults, and high-quality, relevant learning opportunities. I want that for my child. We believe in our teachers. We believe in our staff, our students, and our families. This foundation is the cornerstone of student success. We're all in this together. We believe in putting students first in every single thing we do. And I think I've, I've reiterated that multiple times tonight. This requires high expectations of our staff and our students as well as supportive partnerships among our families and the communities. We're never going to be anything without our families. We have to have that. We have to support our families. And in turn, our families will support us. We believe that all students will be respected, educated, and given the opportunity to succeed. And you'll notice we said all students, every single student that walks in the door. We believe in supporting the whole student in all aspects of their education, social, emotional, academics, athletics, and extracurricular. It's all important. And if you all will remember back to the video, that was one thing that Ms. Bailey commented. You know, our teachers, it's not just academics. Sure, it's important. It's the most important. But are we going to be able to learn if we don't address social, emotional learning? If we don't take into what's important to them, their athletics or their extracurriculars? We have to be well-rounded and we have to focus on all aspects. And parameters. Okay, this is the, this is how we're going to operate. We will. So I really like how strong that is because there's no, there's no wiggle room. Like, we're going to do this. We will foster a love of learning in students to produce lifelong learners, encourage students to think critically. We will operate schools which are physically and emotionally safe with environments conducive to learning. We will acknowledge the necessity to educate, feed, and support all students. And you all have heard me say that all year long. We will do everything in our power to help students achieve their goals. You know, it's powerful. When you just really read it and listen and think about it and think about the awesome responsibility that all of we, all of us have in shaping the lives of young students. It's really powerful. So strategic leadership, that's the work that I have focused the most on this year. Is getting, setting a path for us, determining which direction that we are going to go. And this just demonstrates some of that. We've had virtual task force meetings. Um, we've had strategic planning meetings. For those of you who were a part of that, I think that little picture in the corner was the night all our docs went everywhere when we were trying to do that virtually. I think Ms. Mattingly got lost in one of our rooms.
My virtual rooms.
No idea. We were learning just like our kids. And I think that that's what we all came away with, you know? It was a big hot mess, but we learned and the next time we did it right. And that's all we can expect from ourselves and that's all we can expect from our kids. And again, this is, is just some more photos of the work. And I, and again, I just want to take a second to thank everybody who's been part of this. Because we've had meeting after meeting after meeting and you've spent time away from your families to give and to give to Rockcastle County Schools to make sure that we're doing this right, that we are ready, that we are ready and aimed for the future. And Jamie, I'm just going to quickly let you click on that SWOT analysis. And this, I have them in here for every single department. I'm not going to go through that with you. But I just want you to see the work that, that our department heads have done to, to really take a deep dive into looking at everything from food service to transportation, to facilities, to instruction, to special education, to student services, looking at the broad picture and how are we going to take all this information and set goals for ourselves and get better? And, and those of you that know me well, know that I'm super, probably the most competitive person that you're ever going to come across. And I want us to be the best. And we're not going to be the best unless we dive into this work and get really serious about it. What are we going to do to improve? So to everybody that's participated in that, it's been a tremendous amount of work. But thank you because it's going to make a difference. Okay, instructional leadership. If you had asked me the first day of my superintendency, what is your strength? I would have without a doubt said instruction. That's what I'm passionate about. That's what I know. That's what I love, is teaching and learning. How do we close gaps? How do we grow? How do we make sure that every Rockcastle County School student that graduates is ready? Ready to go to college or ready to go to a career or ready to go to the military? That's what this standard is about. How do we do that successfully? So evidence. So we have developed, so we've asked so much of our teachers out of necessity, this necessity this year. But we've developed some digital learning, professional development for everyone. Because if you will just think back, it was just a few, 15 months ago that we didn't have Chromebooks in Rockcastle County Schools. That we were sending out NTI packets every two weeks on paper that Ms. Mattingly and I and Mr. Coker and, and everybody in this, this one row right here was working on. And, and I can't tell you that it was high quality. It wasn't. I can't tell you, but it was fast. We had about two days and we figured it out and we did it. We had a lot of laughs about it, but we did it. But now look where we are. Every kid in Rockcastle County Schools has a Chromebook, an instructional tool to drive their learning. Our teachers are amazingly proficient at Google Classroom. Our, I mean, our teachers, I can't even say enough of wonderful things about them. What they have done and what they have accomplished in such a short amount of time. PLC implementation is on the top of my list of importance. I've seen the value of that. I've seen what it does to help schools grow. So we've partnered with K E D E on the Office of Continuous Learning. Our principals have worked with them. They've been in our schools. You know, COVID has, has, has prevented us from doing that to full implementation, but we're ready to take off with that work coming up.
Remind me what PLC stands for?
Professional Learning Community.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. I apologize. We do have academics and sometimes educators get going on them. We joined and participated in, in, in cooperatives. We've been very active in those. And they have been in our school system and our district really helping. Um, we've encouraged teachers to, to branch out. Go! Spread your wings, fly, learn, participate. Part of the K E D C Aspire Grant, we, we've, we've encouraged our teachers to do that. We've had coaching grants in the district, district from Southeast, South Central Co-op. We've encouraged our teachers to do that. We've encouraged them to enroll in those professional learning opportunities. Our preschool had a, a coaching grant. Grants across this district that are really helping our teachers, um, get better and to hone their craft. We created a elementary teacher advisory council to help guide us through COVID. Because what we quickly found out through this school year is what works at Rockcastle County High School may not work at Broadhead Elementary. And we've got to have some different groups advising us and we did that. Um, we've created literacy teams in every one of our schools. We established a MyRock online platform, worked an A B schedule, district, um, digital learning team. We've modeled Google Classroom lessons. We've monitored those. I'm not telling you all anything you don't know. It's been a hard year. It's been a year of the most growth that I could ever possibly imagine taking place. And then at very last, and something I'm really excited about moving forward for our high school and middle school, is we have joined the Advanced Ed Program to try to promote some, promote some higher level learning at, at our high school and middle school. So I'm really excited about that opportunity. So here's some pictures about instructional leadership. One thing that is not on that list, and if you'll look to that tweet to the right, excited to get our district PBIS team launched. That is behavior management, positive behavior management. So Rockcastle County Middle School is guiding that work this year. They're, they are going to be implementing that in, in the school. And when we come back in the fall, Broadhead Elementary is picking that up next. Really excited about that. Of course, we have our MyRock online program. And you'll see our help desk that we established for all of our online learners. That was phenomenal. That was a wonderful idea that we, that we implemented, being able to be available for our families. Again, and then coming back to school is cool. You know, we have to promote school. We have to sell school. We have to sell Rockcastle County Schools. We have to get kids excited. And we have to, just like Mr. Bishop was talking about. When kids leave, we want them to say, I can't wait to come back tomorrow. And that's our responsibility as a whole to make sure that that happens. Again, here's some more, um, just instructional leadership. You know, you can tell a lot through pictures. Can tell a lot of work that takes place. And on the left, um, again, I know you all have heard me. I'm really excited about our partnership with App Harvest at Rockcastle County High School, where we're going to have a hydroponic container farm and grow lettuce. We are going to have more lettuce than we are all ever going to know what to do with. But how exciting is that? You know, our kids, that's what it's about, creating opportunities for our kids.
So we're going to have a lot of salads, you're saying?
Miss Jamie, it's really neat. I mean, our food service is going to utilize that lettuce daily. You know, we hope to reach out to the hospital to be able to provide lettuce for the cafeteria. You know, that's from our kids. I mean, it's a wonderful opportunity. And again, this is instructional leadership lift grant. We've been, that we've been deeply involved in that. Our special ed teachers have had professional growth. Um, we've done holiday read allowance. We've done everything that we can possibly do to grow our instructional program. Cultural leadership. We've got to get people to understand. We have to understand the people in our We have to understand the people in our district. We have to understand our community. We have to value the history and the traditions of our community and we have to move forward. You know, and that's a lot, when you think about that and you think about the moving dynamics of an entire community, how do you do that and infuse that work with passion, meaning, and purpose? You know, this is an important area. So here's some evidence of that. Positive media relations, you've heard me say, and I think in a previous before the meeting, Dr. Carter and Mr. Laura commented on this. Positive media relations. I'm on Twitter all the time. It's not for personal use. I promote Rockcastle County Schools like it is the best place in the entire world because I believe it is. And I want everybody from Pikeville to Paducah to know that we're on the map. And I, and I put it out there. Every single thing that our kids are doing, I want the world to know it and I want them to want to come to Rockcastle County Schools and be a part of our excitement. Um, I've been on the radio and on Facebook Live doing monthly sessions. We've initiated like social media district spotlights. This is us, this is what we're doing. Come join us, we'd love to have you be a part of it. Utilizing our website, Ms. Jamie does a phenomenal job of highlighting our students and our staff. You know, we've had a teacher just this week, Ms. Teresa Davis, who is the Teacher of the Week on Channel 18. I mean, how awesome is that? She's phenomenal. We've got to celebrate her and celebrate how lucky we are to have such great teachers. Um, increasing leadership capacity, that's, that's important. Everybody has a part at this team. Everybody, everybody's role is different, but everybody's a part of the team. Soliciting teacher feedback, now, you know, that can take the shape of, in, in many shapes. That can be survey, that can also be just walking down the hallway. You know, tell me what's going great, tell me what's not going great. Just talking and listening and respecting people's opinions, very important. And guiding our district leadership team and I will, and I will point to the word guided. Cause that doesn't say dictated, doesn't say, even doesn't even say led. And if you'll go back to what our teacher, what one of those students said, a leader is strong enough to walk beside. You know, I walk beside these people. We're a team and we're all in it for the same, same purpose for our kids. Um, using, effectively using resources, building relationships, and then community involvement. We have to be present in our community. I have to be present especially, but all of our leadership staff has to be present because, you know, we represent Rockcastle County Schools and we need to do it with pride. So here's some, some photo evidence of that standard. And if you can see, you know, I will never, and anybody, I think that these, these people that work closely with me every day, I will never ask you to do anything that I'm not willing to do myself. You know, does that mean going out on a Sunday afternoon and putting up signs for meal pickup? Sure, does. Means whatever it takes to get the job done. Um, our, this is some Mount Vernon Elementary School teachers, you know? Our teachers love our kids. That's a lot of our culture. You will never, ever go into a Rockcastle County Schools and not feel the love that our teachers have for our students. And it's not just our teachers, it's our food service. It's our bus drivers that, you saw a picture of me riding a bus. Those kids are so excited to get on that school bus and see that bus driver. That's the first person they see and it's important, very important. So here's cultural leadership. This is what it's about. It's about community events. It's about writing letters to students and letting them know that I'm proud of them. It's about doing TV clips at the high school with student council. It's about our office staff celebrating we're back to school and waving to our community. It's about parent communication surveys. We need to know what works for our parents, what doesn't work. And then it's our responsibility to implement that. So human resource leadership, you, you, if you can think back to the beginning of this presentation, that was my professional growth plan. This is an area that I felt like we needed the most in Rockcastle County Schools. It was something that was lacking for us, that we needed to really focus on. So what are some things that I did for that? Implementing a new teacher cadre, I've, I've already talked about how important that was. Professional growth plans for our administrators and our district office leadership team. Using survey data and needs assessment to figure out what kind of professional development do our teachers need? What do they want? What's gonna help them get better? That's not up to me to decide, that's up to, for them to tell me what they need. And we did that through survey data. Implementing administrative evaluation system. And again, an evaluation system, when you see that, I would like to steer your mind away from good and bad. I want to steer your mind towards growth. Coaching, what do we do to make everybody better? What do we do to make our administrators? How do they see themselves? Where do they want to grow and how can I help them get better? The PEESL standards, those professional standards for administrators. You know, we, we, we spent several days as an administrative staff looking at that. What does that mean? What's proficiency? How are we gonna get to proficiency? We've redone the certified evaluation plan. Um, we, we've made some significant changes to that work. We've implemented elementary advisory group. And, and myself, I've been modeling the importance of professional growth. I told you all at the beginning, that's hugely important to me, to never stop learning. So I have done that by enrolling in the doctoral program at Murray State University. And here's evidence of all that work that I've been talking about. Those yellow charts, those are PEESL standards. What are we doing in our schools already? And how are we, if we're not meeting them, what are we gonna do to meet them? There's teacher advisory pictures. There's Mr. Derek Bustle in the bottom and he's presenting to our new teacher cadre. And if any of you all know Mr. Bustle, you know how passionate he is for our kids. And there he is presenting. Um, at the top right is also a new teacher cadre session of our principals, um, and, and our, and our new teachers, um, talking and conversing about, about growth. And there's just a few other, other tweets about the work that we're doing. And again, why do I do that? I do that because I want everybody in the state of Kentucky to know this is a great place to be. This is a great place to work, it's a great place to send your kids to school. And I want people to know that Rockcastle County Schools is on the map. Managerial leadership. That's looking at staffing, budgeting, priorities to student learning, and school safety. I'm very passionate about school safety. I want, when our kids come to school, I want our parents to always know that we are doing the very best that we possibly can do to make certain that when their kids are in our responsibility, that we're taking care of them. And that doesn't just, you know, school safety is broad. You know, we immediately think of tragedy. That, that, that's not school safety. School safety is bus safety. School safety is cafeteria safety. School safety is classroom safety. It's a broad, it's bullying. You know, all of that goes into school safety. So probably one of the most proud things I am of being superintendent of Rockcastle County Schools is we established forty-five community feeding sites. And if you notice, I said we, because that took a lot of people. That was Ms. Jamie, that was Mr. Penn, that was every single bus driver. That was every teacher instructional assistant. That was every food service person. That was every principal, teacher, that was every, that was the whole team and our community. Who's talking about community partnerships. You know, we were working with churches, we were working with the library, we were working with apartments. We were working with everybody in our whole county. How are we gonna make sure our kids are fed? That was hugely important to me. Implement, um, and mon, and partnership with Mount Vernon City Police to fund an SRO. We're still in that process, moving forward with that. Um, we created a long-range staffing plan to reduce the cost of our staffing. We have to be within a range to be healthy. We did that through attrition by looking at retirements, by taking a deep look at, is this really a position that we have to have? Or can we eliminate that position and putting some more money back into? When we do that and we do it responsibly and we do it methodically and we make sure that we're not hurting our instructional program, then that means we have more money in the general fund to support our students. Our energy project, you are gonna hear more about that later tonight. But every single building is going to get LED lighting. We're getting bipolar ionization in every single building. When we go to school in the fall, we can look at every family, every student, every teacher, every employee and say, you're gonna be breathing clean air. You're gonna be working in an environment that has great lighting. That's important. We've worked on staffing allocations. We've applied for grants. We've prioritized our needs. Just last night, we discussed our, our facilities plan. We've done that through SWOT analysis. We know that we have to make some modifications. We've implemented one-to-one technology district-wide. We've looked and analyzed our historical student enrollment. You know, because if we don't have kids sitting in our seats, that means our funding decreases. So we've looked at that. What does that mean for the future? We've done SWOT analysis. Through all of that work and all of that looking at that staffing, we were able to budget and give all of our staff a three percent raise this year. And we've done, we're gonna be able to sustain that through the attrition that I just talked about. You know, that's something I'm really proud of. Our teachers deserve that, our employees deserve that. Um, we've implemented a safety tip line. We've, we've established and monitored trauma teams. We've participated in the Handle With Care Program with the State Police. And here's some evidence of all of that work. You can see, there's our feeding program. We, we not only delivered, but we also did other community partnerships where we were delivering boxes of food. Mass mandates, goodness, we'll probably never forget that, Willie. Back to school schedules, how many of those did we create this year? You know, like I mentioned, we had five back to schools, five first days. And if you count summer school, that's six. It's like the never-ending first day of school. And that middle, middle tweet, absolutely incredible partnerships here. I applaud school systems continuing to care for their students beyond just education. Outside-the-box thinking during a difficult time for us all. Now, that's talking about Rockcastle County. That's an outsider saying, look, they're partnering with their hospital to provide telehealth services for their kids. And we're gonna expand that, Mr. Rappert's gonna talk about that more tonight. Um, Kentucky School Board Association tweeting about our task force teams. Safety, we, we have, um, our Rockcastle County High School. We've, we've put this, this, um, theme up in, in all of our glass doors. We have plans to do that in other schools moving forward. We actually had the design developed and ready to go. Summer meals, I've talked again about feeding. You know, we transitioned, we had, Ms. Jamie, I don't know how many feeding plans we had, but we've had a lot. And we've transitioned and we jumped between this worked, this didn't work, let's try this. Oh, this was successful, let's stick with this. But we've had to be willing to change. Collaborative leadership, working with your community, working with your parents, working with your government leaders, business representatives, being willing to be a partner. And not just about what can they give us, but what can we give? What do we have to offer our community? And, and I think we've really done an excellent job of focusing on that this year. Um, we, again, the district task force teams. We've partnered with Rockcastle Regional Hospital. Out of necessity, I have gotten to know that the ladies and gentlemen at the Cumberland Valley Regional Health Department very, very well. We are really close now because we talked every single day. It seems like I was on the phone with the health department, developed some great friendships, actually. Um, Rockcastle County Sheriff's Office, Mount Vernon City Police, our city and county government. Somerset Mental Health, Christian Appalachian Project. Wow, they do amazing work. I'm blessed that we're able to partner with them. And again, App Harvest, we've done planning with KEDC. We've collaborated with these different co-ops. Something that we've just started is we're partnering with the Elgin Foundation to provide all of our principals with leadership opportunities. So every principal in Rockcastle County Schools is gonna have a mentor this year. So they're gonna have someone that's gonna be coming into their school and working with them, helping them grow and get better. And I personally have joined the Rockcastle County Kiwanis Club, become a board member of the Chamber of Commerce, partnered with, um, County Judge Executive on many projects. But specifically, this one was very important, our judge, our county judge, our EOC cap to organize the Rockcastle County Warming Center. How important was that to our community? Again, here's some pictures and I, I will say, this top right, um, we deemed that Flossy Day. And for those of you that don't know, this is Ms. Flossy, who is, who is an author, a published author. Um, she was from Rockcastle County. She never received her high school diploma. And we were able to have a special diploma service for her at the Rockcastle County High School. And if you just look at the sheer joy on that, that, that sweet lady's face, that tells the whole story. It was a phenomenal day and, and Mr. Rappert helped to establish that. But, but that's all about collaborating with your community and serving your community. And here's other, other pictures from hunger walks to picking up garbage to the ability walk that's, that we're going to be working with at the hospital, um, to, um, COVID vaccines, to Kiwanis, to Flossy Day, to rocket relaunch. Look, all those wifi hotspots, those were community partners. We partnered with every volunteer fire department, um, churches, and we were able to provide hotspots for our, for our students. And then, and then the, the most important thing I think we did this school year is create the Rockcastle County Middle School Warming Center. And that was a time when our community was in need and our school system stepped up and we served. And again, what is leadership? In my mind, leadership is service. And, and that's what Rockcastle County Schools demonstrates with that project. And the bottom left was all of the people that we partnered with through this. That then we invited them back to a board meeting and, and presenting them with a certificate of recognition for, you know, supporting us and supporting their community. Influential leadership. So this area or this standard is what am I doing as a superintendent of Rockcastle County Schools that promotes the success of teaching and learning? Um, it is at the larger political scale, not just local, it can be local, but the state level, the national level. What am I doing to promote that leadership? Um, so I had the opportunity this, this year to present on, um, our superintendent webinar. So, um, all superintendents across the state, at one time, we were meeting weekly on a webinar. So I had the, the opportunity to present at the statewide level, our SR2 funding plan and our growth. What is Rock, what was Rockcastle County Schools gonna do to ensure that student learning was maintained, encouraged, and promoted? How was I going to use SR2 funds to make sure that that happened and to close those gaps? Had the opportunity to present to the Kentucky Board of Education along with a middle school student, Ms. Anna Coliff, about the impacts of COVID-19 on student learning. That was a phenomenal day. She was a remarkable student. Um, I was, I spoke at the Southeast, South Central Legislate, Legislative Priority Press Conference. Had the opportunity to present to the Prechard Committee. Been interviewed and featured on WEKU's Eastern Standard Radio Show, featured in PRTC Magazine and in the Christian Appalachian Magazine. Participated in multiple meetings with state representative and, state representatives and senators. Um, our state representative, Mr. Josh Bray is here tonight. Appreciate him being here. But that goes beyond local, that goes beyond people, representatives and senators across the state. I will always fight for public education and that's what that is about. Um, I've been appointed to the Kentucky Department of Education Quality Curriculum Task Force. So what is quality curriculum across the state? What does that look like? Appointed to the Superintendent Advisory Council, which gives advice and input on matters concerning educational policy to Kentucky's Education Commissioner. Pointed to the KASA School Safety Council, pointed as a KASA ambassador. Something I'm extremely proud of, do not feel the least bit deserving of this, but I've been nominated for the Superintendent of the Year Award by my peers. Very proud of that, um, very humbling. It actually makes me, after just thinking about and talking through this, it makes me really emotional because it's been a hard year. COVID-19 has been a hard year. And, and to think and to, and to be recognized by my peers is very important.
When was that done, Carrie?
The nomination. Um, it has just been completed and I have until July the 2nd to fill out my, um, portion of the information that has to be submitted. So it's just very recent, just got the email about two weeks ago. Um, so here's some pictures. This is me speaking at Southeast South Central, um, about educational priorities. Um, the, the right is us, us presenting at the Kentucky Board of Education, um, Eastern Ra- Eastern Standard Radio Program, and then the Prechard Committee about healthy at schools. Um, you can see in the middle that, that was a magazine that I was featured in and that was through our partnership with, um, Christian Appalachian Project. Um, on the right, it is being on the, the radio and tried to do that, um, thanks to Mr. Jeremy Rowell. We did that monthly, every other month, had the opportunity to share about Rockcastle County Schools. And then there's the Lieutenant Governor tweeting about Rockcastle County. You know, how fab- fabulous is that? "Our schools are so much more than the places where our children learn. They are safe havens at the heart of our communities. Thank you, Rockcastle County Schools and all the schools for, around our state for keeping families dry and warm this winter." Now, we have a lot to be proud of in Rockcastle County, a whole lot to be proud of. And we need to promote and encourage because this is our home. And if we don't have pride in our home, no one else will. And our kids deserve this. Our kids deserve us to do the very best that we can for them. So, almost done, I know this is long. Um, Leadership Practices Inventory. So part of this capstone and part of my process of going through this superintendency is I have to go through, I had to go through the Five Practices of Exemplary Leadership. And this is something that I will be really honest, this made me nervous. Because this is real input. You know, if you think, you may think you're doing a good job, but until you ask people, you don't really know. You know, you really don't know until you reach out and you push that send button and that survey goes out to ev- to principals. Everybody in central office, parents, went to community members, it went, it just went. And I was like, oh, I don't know, I'm just, it was, it was nerve-wracking. And then you get the responses back. So you get responses back and they can range from six to sixty of your performance. And so those are the categories. Do you model the way? Do you inspire a shared vision? Challenge the process, enable others to act and encourage the heart. So if you'll look in the right category, model the way, out of all of those responses, out of all of those people that took that survey concerning my performance, I scored a fifty-six out of sixty. On inspire a shared vision, it was fifty-four point nine out of sixty. Challenge the process, fifty-five point seven. Enable others to act, fifty-seven point eight. And encourage the heart, fifty-five point nine. Now, I will say, when I got that back and I read the comments, I sat in my office and I shut the door and I cried. And I did that because it's about our kids. You know, if we do all of those things as educators, our kids are going to be successful. And that's what it's about. And, and I, and I keep this, this tweet on the right on my phone. If, if I'm not sure, I'm kind of having a bad day, I want to read it. Just saying, Carrie Ballinger and Rockcastle County Schools know what they are doing. Students matter to them. There's really nothing else to say. You know, students matter. They matter to Roundstone, they matter to Broadhead, they matter to Mount Vernon, they matter to the middle school, they matter to the high school, they matter to our bus drivers, to our food service, to our classified staff, our certified staff, to us, to our Rockcastle County Board of Education, students matter. And if every single day we can wake up and come to work with that vision that we are here to support our kids, everything else will fall into place and we will be successful. So next steps. So, um, the author of Ramona passed away this year. When I was a young girl, I read every Ramona book I could get my hands on. I loved Ramona the Pest. So I wanted to use this quote because I really can identify with that. She was not a slowpoke grown-up, she was a girl who could not wait. Life was so interesting, she had to find out what happened next. You know, so what are we going to do next? You know, we've done a lot. You know, if you think about everything that I've talked about tonight and we've accomplished all of that in one year, done a lot of work. But what are we going to do next? Well, we're going to finish our strategic plan, we're still in that process. But what good is a strategic plan if you don't implement it and you don't monitor it? It's just something on a piece of paper. So that's going to be my number one priority moving into next year. I want to create a district-wide curriculum map for our elementary schools. So when a student goes from Roundstone to Broadhead to Mount Vernon and they're moving, they don't get behind, they don't get lost. Everybody's together, we're on the same page. A second grade at Roundstone's on the same page as a second grade at Broadhead. Implement routine instructional rounds. I never, ever want a teacher to think that I come in their classroom because I'm trying to catch them. I want them to think I'm in their classroom because I'm proud of them. I want to see the great things they're doing and I want to come in and I want to learn and I want to implement instructional rounds. So we're all in there and we're all working together, getting better. Fully implement weekly P L C meetings at all of our schools. Again, I've talked about how important that work is. We got off track because of COVID, but moving forward, we will be implementing that. We will be expanding our M I R A P online program, implementing our trauma plan, which Mr. Repert's going to talk about, expanding mental health supports. If we've heard from our students, we know how important that is. They need that support. Holding community forums, I want to know what our community expects from me, what they want, their input is important and I plan to do that moving forward. Implementing superintendent advisory groups, I'm going to start with a student group. And you all can probably guess why, because those two matters. So next year, I'll be moving in, moving and implementing student advisory groups. I want a middle school, high school, and elementary groups and I want to meet with them monthly and I want to know what's going well for them and what's not going well for them. If it's not going well, then we're going to fix it. Continue to monitor this budget and align with student needs. You know, that's, that's a necessity. We have to be fiscally responsible. Overseal the completion of an energy project. And then the last one, I think everybody in this room is going to agree with me on, we have to address the need for a new Rockcastle County Middle School. It's time, the opportunity is here, and that's something that we will be pursuing as we move forward. Why? Why do this? Why am I passionate about what I do? Why am I passionate about Rockcastle County Schools? This is my favorite, um, Bible verse. "But in humility, consider others as more important than yourself." Philippians two, three. This, this work is my passion and this work is about service. It's about service to others, it's about service to our community, it's about service to our students and our families. That's the why. You do this because they matter. So thank you. It's been an honor, it's been an honor of my life to be able to be a servant leader for Rockcastle County Public Schools during this school year. I want to be here forever. I want this to always be my home. I love, I'm a Rocket through and through. I love, I love it. I think you can tell that from my passion, you can tell that from what I've promoted, from what we've done this year, the work we've done this year. And I just want to say thank you, um, it's been, it's been a great year. You know, so many people have said, gosh, it should be the worst year in the world to be a first-year superintendent. Why did you do that? But you know what my answer has been? My answer has always been no, it's an opportunity. It's an opportunity because, and Mr. Hammond can attest to this, there's not another superintendent in the state of Kentucky that's been through a pandemic. So I might as well join forces with them. And you know, I'm pretty proud of what we've accomplished. Think we've done a phenomenal job. And, and if you notice, I say we. None of this would take place without our staff, our employees, from the very top, everywhere. It's very important, we are a team, we are the Rockcastle County School team. Thank you all, I know that was long, apologize, just a lot of information to share. Um, does anybody have any questions or any comments they'd like to make?
Ms. Carrie, I would just like to thank you, thank you for your presentation. Um, I think that you've done a phenomenal job leading this district this year. And, um, I'm, I'm thinking that in a few years, Ms. Dr. Carter, she may, you know, you may be calling her and asking her questions, what do you think?
I was going to say thank you. Uh, I've studied leadership for nineteen years and, um, the heart that you have for kids and has always had for kids, it shows. And as long as you keep that focus, no matter what, that leadership is about serving, um, that i- it's evident.
Tremend- tremendous job. And of course, I will, I've, I've mentioned this to you before. Uh, I would say that Ms. Ballinger was a fantastic teacher. And of course, I told her, and of course, this is no slam on anyone else's application they ever received here, but of all, all applications for elementary teachers years ago, it was hers. I mean, her, her application matches the performance that she's done here this evening. Fantastic. I mean, the, the best application and resume are the most, or at least the most impressive that I ever saw. And it stuck with me all those years until eventually I told her some time ago about that. So it match, it matches this performance here this evening and the work that you've done.
Appreciate that. No, thanks. I'm going to see it and like, you guys take over from you?
Sure. I won't, uh, I won't promise to talk as long as you do. I just want to address the board a little bit. I don't know if you guys, you know what kind of year it's been with COVID? It hasn't just been hard for superintendents, it's been hard for board members, it's been hard for school administrators, heck, it's been hard for parents. I have a twelve-year-old at home, my wife can't wait for him to go back to school next year. It's been hard for everybody. But in addition to that, you may not know what she's had to do this year. Larry knows because he's been the executive coach. But, uh, she's had seventeen days out of district with me and she's been present every one of those seventeen days, except for one day when she called me the night before and said, we don't have electricity in Rockcastle County and we have a warming thing going on in our schools, a state, uh, setup, and I've got to be there. And I said, yes, ma'am, you do, that's where you need to be. And she knew she needed to be here. And so that was definitely an excuse to absence. But anyway, seventeen days out of district, four days I've been here in the district once each quarter. So she's had twenty-one days with me and with the other new superintendents in Kentucky throughout this year. That equates to over one month of workdays. So next year, she's going to have an additional month of work to devote to Rockcastle County. So congratulations, Carrie, that's, uh, that's awesome. And this presentation, just like Larry said and others said, wow. Uh, it comes through loud and clear that your focus is on kids. And that's where it definitely should be. Um, there's twenty-five new superintendent vacancies already for next year. You might, uh, expect those to turn over pretty quickly because it's a tough job. It's a lonely position being superintendent because you have to make decisions. Sometimes people around you may not understand those decisions, but you got to make them anyway. And, uh, this is, uh, it's interesting, I, I told them earlier when we had our I O P meeting, this is my two-hundred-and-seventh capstone that I've attended. And you say, wow, that's a lot. It is. That means I've worked with two-hundred-and-seven new superintendents in Kentucky, some districts twice, one district, I'm going two-thirty to be for the third time. And that's in a ten-year span. So sometimes superintendents don't last very long in districts and sometimes they last a really long time. But it's, uh, I think Wayne Young did a, uh, I know he did a study, he hasn't published it yet, but it's coming out next week or so. And one-hundred-and-twenty-five of the one-hundred-and-seventy-one new superintendents in Kentucky, or superintendents in Kentucky have four or fewer years of experience.
What's that number? What was that number again? I'm sorry.
Hundred-and-twenty-five of one-hundred-and-seventy-one have fewer than four years of experience. So that's, uh, I, I guess I say that to say, if you have a really good superintendent, you know, uh, sure, hold their feet to the fire, make sure they work hard, but make sure you support them in every way possible. And that includes making sure they take time for themselves. This lady's a workaholic. I, I use this and I use this across the street earlier. There's a analogy I like to use here in Kentucky where horse state, and you got workhorses and you got show horses. Carrie Ballinger's not a show horse, she's a workhorse. She's here all hours, she's, even if she's at home, I suspect she's thinking about school matters more than she should be. So, uh, that's kind of the superintendent I'd want to have. I don't want a show horse. To me, a show horse is somebody who's bragging about themselves and, uh, how much they've done. Tonight during her presentation, I kept hearing about other people doing things. She really doesn't care to get some credit as long as this community, this county, this district is better for. And, uh, to me, that's, that's the bottom line of everything. Uh, again, it's been a difficult year. Uh, you say, well, you've seen two-hundred-and-seven capstones, how many people have failed? One out of two-hundred-and-seven. That might surprise you, you might say, well, must be pretty easy to go through a new superintendent training if you only have one failure out of two-hundred-and-seven. It's not, it's hard. But I will tell you, I think the success rate is based on board of education. Because you all select who is best for your situation. You don't select just whoever walks through the door and applies. Uh, and somebody who's a good superintendent in one spot might not be a good superintendent in another district. You know, I think, uh, Marty Polio's doing a great job in Jefferson County. I don't think he'd be worth a flip here in Rockcastle County. I'd tell him that to his face, I worked with him too. Uh, it's just, you choose wisely and then you train that person in the way you want him to go because you are in effect their bosses. And they know it and they, uh, they appreciate that, they respect that. But again, it all comes back to a word she said over and over and over, team. This is a team in this room. And I'm going to tell you what, I'm going to be watching this team in future years and I'm not going to be at all surprised to see great things happen in Rockcastle County Schools. She finished everything officially tonight. She'll get her certificate of completion, uh, on July twenty-eighth, uh, in the golf house in Louisville in a ceremony. And the Commissioner of Education will not fist bump her and shake her hand, they'll make pictures without masks and it'll be a fun time for her.
It'll be normal.
Congratulations again. She's been an excellent mentor this year.
Yes.
This lady has just been, uh, well, she's just poised to take the position as the K A S A President for next year. And I had the honor of doing that a few years ago and there's about three thousand members in that organization, a little more than that. So that's a big, big chore in addition to serving as superintendent of Marion County, which she's done an exemplary job with. So, uh, she's had a good mentor this year. And I suspect she's going to have a good friend and a professional colleague for years to come. I always tell new superintendents, I'll remain their executive coach until I die or they retire, whichever occurs first, and I hope neither occurs anytime soon.
Thank you, Dr. Carter.
I'm not really sure how I'm supposed to follow Sweet Home Alabama and Carrie. So, so when they, uh, called and asked me to be a mentor, um, I said, who? And, um, they said, Rockcastle County. So it's kind of funny, I've done this twice and I've had Rockcastle and Pulaski. So I jokingly say, I grew up in eastern Kentucky, I have the same accent and that's why I asked. Now, I'm, I'm glad to see y'all laughing because that's the one thing we've got to do in this business, right? We've all, we can't take ourselves way too serious, right? We, we've all got to just, it's, we're just all going through this journey together. I have been fortunate to be a superintendent for eight years, going on my ninth year in Marion County. And actually going to have a Rockcastle County native, um, come take an ag position with us, so excited about that. But, uh, I just wanted to say that I've been here a couple times, it's always been a pleasure. I love seeing all the tweets that Carrie puts out, it's a great way for superintendents to connect and do all those kinds of things. What I would say about Carrie is obviously she's a visionary leader, but it's very important not to just have a vision, but to do something about it. My philosophy is don't talk about it. If, if you're not going to do it, then take it off the piece of paper, right? If you put it down and you say, well, it's just not going to work, take it off. I, I really think that Carrie is that way and I think she's made a lot of things happen. She's very focused on like, like, uh, Dr. Carter said, uh, the team effort. And, you know, when she talks about things like what's our strengths and our weaknesses, I meant not everybody's open to that. And I don't know if y'all have ever met people like that, but I really don't like hanging around with them, I'll speak to them. You know, I mean, you know, but because if you're trying to get better, when I go to the doctor and I, and I have a physical, I want them to tell me not just the healthy parts, but also the parts that the parts that maybe I need to work on. Because if I want to live a long time, then that's what I have to do. And it's obvious that with your all strategic planning work, that you're looking at every part. You know, who wants an autopsy? I want a physical every year. And so I think with this lady's leadership, that's what you all are gonna be constantly doing every year, is getting a good checkup and trying to get better and getting healthier and be able to do a five K, maybe a ten K. I think she could do a ten K. So, you know, anything that I can ever do or our team can ever do, I was looking at Mr. Bishop's notes, and I said, "I ready." And I said, "You know, we're gonna do that next year in Marion County. We've been doing that for many years." So I know that she's on top of things. She always asks really good questions and is very open to feedback. So I'm just happy that I had the opportunity to spend the year with her and have an appointment.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been my pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you again. All right. The next thing on our agenda is operations and actions. I looked over all of these. These seem very routine. I didn't have any questions. Did anyone else have any questions concerning them?
I'd just like a comment. Of course, I've got to do that on nearly everything. It's just nothing, any consequence, but the therapy services with hands-on therapy. Just share a little bit about that service with us.
Well, if you remember, I think it's two board meetings ago, we took off the speech pathologist position. So that's simply just taking that service off where we were contracting with the speech pathologist. So it's like an amendment to that contract that we already had previously in place. So I asked for a new contract, removing that speech pathologist position. So it's just updated without removal of that. So the contract is still, everything is still in turn, just with the removal of the speech pathologist position.
And the prices are, you know, comparatively, good prices compared to what I'm dealing with.
This is where we hired independently.
This is where we had that itinerant speech pathologist position that I brought before you, like two months ago, or like, I think, two or three years before. So that's exactly what that was. I just wanted a new contract because I wanted them to know that we were no longer gonna be servicing a speech pathologist with them. So.
But all those contract prices.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I mean, and another savings, just to kind of let you all know, our VI servicing that we had previously done, it was a hundred dollars per hour, and we're now only contracting to eighty dollars an hour. So another saving source. Yeah. So, I mean, so we're saving against contractual fees.
Any questions on operations and actions? I need a motion to approve operations and actions.
I make a motion to approve.
All in favor? Item five, this is our discussion action. A, review and approve the superintendent evaluation and contract amendment. This is a time since we are talking about a personnel issue that we have to go into closed session. So I need a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion.
Any second? All right. So we will go to Brandon's office.
And each of you, I've provided you a folder.
They've colored.
Yes, the colored folders for you to take with you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
I'm still gonna go over to the ring.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you so much.
Hey, Dr. Carter. You're the main speaker.
Well.
Hopefully.
Appreciate you.
I appreciate you, man.
Come out of closed session, please.
Thank you, ma'am.
I knew that this was going to be a very long and lengthy process, that's why I had made the recommendation to put this at the end of the meeting so everybody wouldn't have to wait forever. But it was not everyone's decision, you know, everybody didn't want to do that. But as a board, Ms. Carey, we went over all of the standards that we are to look at. And as a board, we all feel like you have went above and beyond what was asked of you. We feel like you've met every one of your standards. Of course, there's always room for growth, you know that, you showed us that on your capstone tonight. But overall, we feel like you are very accomplished in what you've done. Very pleased with what you are doing for Rockcastle County Schools. We did discuss a contract amendment. There is a KRS that there's a little ifiness about if we can do that, if you will check that. But with that amendment, we are in agreement for you to have an extension on your contract. If you would please check on that.
Pending.
Pending, pending the confirmation from an attorney if that can be done since this is your first contract. It was discussed by all of us that that is what we want you to have an extension. We want, you know, we want you to continue to do great things for Rockcastle County Schools. There will be also an amendment on your existing contract for your salary that has been increased. We reflected an increase in her salary. All of staff got a 3% increase and on top of the 3% that you'd already got, we're going to go ahead and do an additional, roughly a little bit over it, at 3%. I think it brought it to 112, is that the discussion that we had? So that contract amendment will also need to include that that is for two years, two additional years. So that will give you a target.
Starting July 1.
Starting July 1, yes. So if you could please check on that for us, we will do that. So I need a motion to approve that that is what we discussed.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Would you care to separate those three items?
Separate what? The evaluation first.
The evaluation first.
We can do that. So the first thing we are going to approve is the evaluation.
Motion.
Okay, second, all in favor? Okay. The next thing we are going to approve is the contract amendment of the extension, okay?
Pending.
Pending the information we find.
Motion, I'll take the motion too.
Second. All in favor? Okay, and the next thing will be, one negative. The next thing we will be approving is the salary increase to the amount that we specified.
Motion, second.
All in favor? All right.
One negative.
One negative. Thank you very much, Ms. Carey, and we're sorry that every...
I'm honored to serve Rockcastle County Schools and I want to thank you all for extending that contract. I understand that's pending, but I'm honored to represent Rockcastle County Schools. I'm honored to serve our kids and thank you all, thank this board for trusting me to do so.
As I said, I have never been with a superintendent that's approachable. So I think, and I think we can all agree on that.
Mm-hmm.
And, yes, so I think that is probably the thing that stood out to me the most, not even being a board member, just previous, so. You're welcome.
Well, I think the thing that stands out with me about you the most is I can tell you love kids.
Oh, yeah, that's what it's all about.
Yes. So...
That's what it's about.
When I said previously, you've done a tremendous job during the most challenging year.
Thank you. May I say something? I'll say nothing.
Okay, awesome. Now we're going to, okay, item 5B, we have to recess and go into a special, we have to recess and go into a special call board meeting for the Rockcastle County School District Finance Corporation.
And you need a motion to recess.
I need a motion to recess.
Regular board meeting.
Need a motion to recess?
Make a motion to recess. One second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yep.
Okay, that there are...
A motion to call this meeting to order.
We need a motion to call this to order.
Okay.
Okay. The second thing is confirm the corporation officers and members. The officers will be myself as president, Carey as secretary, Ginny Sweet as treasurer, members as Anna Goff, Angela Wood, Misty Lake, and Larry Hammond.
No, you're right.
Yes.
We do need, you need to make an amendment to add Mr. Bray's portion.
Before we confirm, we need to make an amendment to add, it would be four actually, or you might want to say 3B. It's an easement between the Rockcastle County School District Finance Corporation and the City of Mount Vernon. You should have that documentation.
Have all of that on your table.
This is something that is needed in order for the project to get moved forward for the city.
Did we not do an easement back when the lot was done and the highway was widened right there, Mr. Bray?
We may have done one with the state. When our engineers were pulling the survey data, they couldn't find anything on record with the city. We thought we had an easement as well.
I thought there was one done back then.
With this being a FEMA project, we wanted to make sure all the eyes were dotted and the team were crossed and then if they could hurt a thing in the world, we'd go ahead and refile it.
Okay.
But when they pulled the survey, they couldn't find any record with the city. But we have to have something because down behind Snack Shack, we've already got an existing pump station.
Yeah, I was thinking, when the road widened, there was just that one little bit of land.
Like a little corner piece.
Like a corner piece and there was an easement created for that.
So if there is an existing easement that comes up, this will be replacing that one, correct?
Yeah, this would be, I guess, in addition to that one.
Okay.
Yeah. So Ginny's saying that the first one was done with the state, so this would be not regregating, it would just be in addition.
Right, right. What we have to do is, so down behind Snack Shack now, down in the bottom, that is the main sewer pump station for the entire sewer district. And so almost everything feeds through there. A few years ago, there was a flood and because of all the excess water, it burned up one of our pumps. And so FEMA has agreed to replace the pump station with the condition we move it out of the hole there. Right. And so what you all have is a, the easement and on the diagram on the survey, it shows where it's to be located. But it's just up top of the hill on, like I said, we think we have, already have that easement there, but just to make sure with FEMA, that's what we're requesting.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. The next thing, I guess we can go on, is consider adopting a resolution for the issuance of energy conservation bonds. Do I need to just read this as is? Okay, this is the resolution. "As a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Rockcastle County School District Finance Corporation, relating to and providing for the issuance of $4 million, $40,000 principal amount, subject to a permitted increase of $405,000 or decrease in amount determined by the corporation to be in the best interest of the corporation, of special obligation bonds, energy conservation revenue bonds..." of special obligation bonds, energy conservation revenue bonds, in accordance with the Kentucky Revised Statutes, Sections 58.010 through 58.140 and 58.600 through 58.615, 45A dot 345 through 45 dot, 45A dot 460, 65 dot 940 through 65 dot 956, 160 dot 160 and 162 dot 120 through 162 dot 300. Collectively, the act to provide funds for energy conservation measures, providing and determining the duty of said corporation in connection with the operation of the school properties and the creation of funds sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on said revenue bonds as and when they mature. The creation of adequate maintenance and insurance funds, authorizing and approving the execution of a supplement to the continuing disclosure procedures and the execution of tax compliance procedures, authorizing the execution of a lease of such foregoing properties to the Board of Education of the Rockcastle County Kentucky School District."
Oh, move.
Yes.
That was a tough question.
Would anyone like to read that again? So we need to make a motion to adopt this resolution. You already got a second?
Second, got it.
All right. Next, I need a motion to accept this easement between the Rockcastle County School District and Finance Corporation and the city of Mount Vernon. Motion and second, all in favor? Next, I need a motion to adjourn from the Finance Corporation meeting.
Motion.
All right. All in favor? Now I need a motion to open a regular board meeting back up.
Make that motion.
All right, we did that legally, okay? All right, there we go.
Moving on.
Moving on, item five C, review and approve the monthly financial reports. Ms. Jenny Sweet had a wonderful work session with us last night concerning our finances, things that has happened in the past, things to expect in the future. So anybody having questions for Ms. Jenny?
Oh, we need to back up.
Do we need to come back?
I'm sorry, we need to go back and do B.
Oh, I thought that's what I did.
You did the Finance Corporation meeting part, but you need to do this same one.
Do I have to read the same thing? Okay, all right. Sorry about that. We're going to do item five B, "Resolution of the Board of Education of the Rockcastle County Kentucky School District, confirming the acceptance of an offer of assistance from the Kentucky School Facilities Construction Commission, authorizing and approving the execution of a lease agreement with the Rockcastle County School District Finance Corporation and any further necessary instruments, approving certain architects' plans for the construction of certain school building projects, authorizing and approving the execution of a supplement to the continuing disclosure procedures and approving the plan of financing the cost of said projects." This is all going to be in one approval. All right, need a motion to approve that. All right, all in favor? Now we can go on. Ms. Jenny, is anybody got any questions for Ms. Jenny concerning the financial reports? We got covered, I think, everything. Thank you for that paper that you gave me earlier, I appreciate that. I need a motion to approve the monthly financial reports. All in favor? Okay, item five D, review and approve the Fidelity Performance Bond of Treasurer for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year.
Oh, move.
Got a first and a second. We discussed all of this last night, all in favor?
Yes.
Item five E, review and approve the pledge of collateral for Citizens Bank for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year.
Oh, move.
Okay.
First and second, all in favor? Review and approve, if anyone would like any information on these things that we are voting for, you are more than welcome to look on the school's website or Ms. Jenny Sweet can give you any of this information, right? Item five G, review and approve the insurance package, no, I'm sorry, review and approve the pledge of collateral for Community Bank for the twenty-one, twenty-two. Motion and second?
I have a quick question. Do we, and forgive me for being known asking this question, but like the collateral, like, I would, I would like a report on our CDs, where that money, like, is that all at one bank?
No.
It's not, could we?
Currently, it is at one.
Oh, currently, it is.
Okay.
It is at Citizens Bank.
Okay.
With a 1.45% interest rate.
Could, could you, you know, I have to do this now obviously because it's late, but like, I would like to see that the CD interest rate versus the checking interest, interest rate to see the best place for that money to make the school more money.
Currently, it is more at the bank.
What's the difference?
1.45% at the bank, 0.75% in our checking account. That was not the case with the prior two CDs that we discussed last night.
So the CD is making more currently?
The ones that we left in the bank are making more in the, in the, in the bank versus the checking account. The ones we moved were making less, were going to mature.
Because they were at different locations, correct?
They are, yes, they were at different locations.
That's what I was thinking, oh, it was.
So they're making the most money where they're at currently?
Yes, and upon maturity, we want to review rates again.
Sure, okay.
But for us to have the bonding potential, it has to stay. It can be either way?
Yeah.
It would just be money, it wouldn't, we wouldn't be bonding on that, that would just be cash on hand that we would have.
Our bonding potential is a different thing.
Yeah, it wouldn't be.
Thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
With that being said, can I get a vote to approve the pledge of collateral for Community Bank? Motion and second, all in favor? Item five G, review and approve the insurance package for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year.
This is our annual insurance package review for property, insurance on our buses. We, last night, and we're going to discuss the cyber insurance, we had a little bit of conversation about that last night. In the prior year, our insurance has increased. For this year, there's been blanket increases across these policies of about eight and a half percent. That's a little bit larger increase than that we've seen.
I think it's because the cost of supply has went up so much.
It's, it's something that all school, that school districts are seeing with those increases. We continue to have one of the lowest coverages, I shouldn't say lowest, per bus insurance rates available. We have an excellent safety history in Rockcastle County Schools, in transportation. Our property had a slight increase and there could be an increase to this policy in the future. And we would get, we would get an invoice on that, should that happen. The reason that could happen is KD has not released property values for districts based on fiscal year twenty-one. So if that happened, we would be billed for the difference. But the insurance company did not have access to those values required by KDE.
Do you get notified if those amounts are, you do get before, okay?
Yes, any changes in policies, we work, an example would be with buses. If we have, you know, if we sell a bus and the bus comes off and we don't replace it with a bus, we would actually get a refund. But if we add buses, you know, we'll get a slight increase, it's based on that one bus, but all of that's monitored. The largest increase was, and this is on page twenty-four if you wanted to review, there's been an increase in all policies for, for schools in the area of just general liability and errors and omission, law enforcement, that type of thing. So that's kind of a, a standard increase that have been across the board with policies. We continue to have excellent ratings, one of the lowest mod rates that you can have. And it certainly attest that to the work that's done by our administrators and our school leaders that are implementing safety precautions, participating in professional development with their staff, doing an excellent job. So that's kind of a, a little bit of overview. Our annual premium for this next year would be $199,432.
What was it last year?
It was $25,351 less. Questions?
Same company.
Same company. We did, we have not been able to get a proposal from, we looked at EMC and one of those areas is something that actually Josh Bray's been working with this on, has to do with the rating that our community has and how far we're away from the high school and, and I'm sure he could explain that much better than I can. Would you like to share?
Sure, so for insurance ratings, they rate cities, counties, towns, all that ISO rating and that determines what your fire insurance rate is, which determines what you're, you have to pay. So in Mount Vernon, we've been working through your insurance agent with the ISO folks and have seen a substantial decrease in that. And so I, I know he's hoping to go, was he able to go through EMC or didn't they?
But he will be able to next year. They, they were just waiting, they needed more confirmation before, and it was the deadline, we didn't, he wasn't able to meet the deadline for this year.
They weren't able to change it till June first.
Yes, but next year, we should be able to pick up another option.
Right, yeah, and, and there could be, you know, some pretty good savings that way.
And thank you, I know, Josh, you were very instrumental in helping us get that approved, so thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
We absolutely appreciate your, your work with, with that. So we hope that we can take advantage of that difference in rate for next year.
So you want to have any other questions for Ms. Jenny? If not, I need a motion to approve the insurance package for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Does that include the-
No, it does not.
Okay, the cyber, okay.
Second.
You got first, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Item five I, review and, I'm sorry, five H, review and approve the commercial cyber insurance policy.
We discussed the cyber insurance last night and I know one of the questions was about coverages and I'll just highlight a couple of the coverages that are most significant. Should we have a breach of confidentiality, there would be coverage to research that breach, to do the forensics, to determine the processes that would need to be taken. The limit is $1 million and $10,000 per claim. So each individual record would have $10,000 coverage. $25,000 of computer securities consultation and $10,000 per claim. Covers lost income up to a million dollars as a result of the damage or based on like reputation of the company or anything like that. System failure, should we have a system failure? It covers the cost incurred by, incurred by the insurer to regain access and restore our data. We talked about that a little bit last night and there's a million dollar coverage with that.
Ms. Jenny, what is the rec, what is the URO's recommendation of which, because when I looked at that, there was a one million, a two million, and a three million and I thought there was very little price difference for, so, for three million, and you know, in comparison.
The one million, the annual premium is $6,115.08. Two million is $9,070.44. For three million, which has a $25,000 per loss claim versus ten, is $10,843.66.
So what, what is, what is URO's collective recommendation? I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms.
No, I just said, like, have, I'm sure that you guys have researched different cyber insurance companies, do you feel this is the best one?
We, insurance with school districts, we utilize a broker to do the research, like on our, our general policy.
Oh, okay.
So he is our broker, a broker at this time and this is the policy that was presented to us with the different options.
Right.
My recommendation is absolutely that we should consider coverage at this time. It is something that we have considered in the past and felt like that, that it wasn't the time that we brought that to the board. But at this time, we felt like it was very, very important to bring it and present it to you for consideration. And certainly my recommendation is that we have coverage for cyber insurance.
I'm feeling like two.
That's, that would be my recommendation in the middle.
It would be the two, go the middle.
Yeah, I think it's something, I hate to say that, something we have to be prepared for, but in this time that we're in, it's necessary. So the recommendation is for the two million dollar policy, which at the cost of?
$9,070.44.
I'll make a motion on that.
Review and approve the Coordinator of Teaching and Learning position. Listen, I can't see it, it's too late, it's my bedtime. I'm sorry. Review and approve the indirect cost rate for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
The indirect cost information is based on expenditures in the district, based on 2019, 2020 data. This information is provided by the Kentucky Department of Education. Our non-restricted indirect cost rate for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year would be 10.82%. Our restricted rate would be 0.76%. This is an annual procedure and, like I said, the rates are provided by KDE. And there may be times that we have an opportunity with a grant to use an indirect rate and that is to recoup costs for the district in order to facilitate that grant.
And that can come sporadically, correct? At different times?
An example would be, the school district does not charge any custodial services or insurance, you know, general liability insurance to our food service department. We take the 0.76% indirect rate with that and it is, comes back to the district to cover those costs. So that would be one example of how we use indirect.
Oh, move.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, ma'am. We're not trying to cut you short, Ms. Jenny, you're listening, you're ready to go along too, okay? Review and approve the Coordinator of the Teaching and Learning position.
Okay, this, I just want to clarify, is not a new position. Ms. Jennifer Mattingly, as sad as we are to see her go, is retiring. She's had a wonderful, wonderful career, has served Rockcastle County Schools well and, you know, it's, I, I can say personally, it's going to be very hard for me to see her walk out that door and she's a, just an asset to all of us. And so, Ms. Jennifer, thank you for your service to Rockcastle County Schools, you're going to be very well missed.
But now, you're not finished right now.
No, but this, this position that is on here is Ms. Jennifer Mattingly's position. This is not a new position. If you would look at the job requirements that are listed, these are Ms. Jennifer Mattingly's job responsibilities currently. What I'm coming to you and asking is for us to change the title of this position and to Coordinator of Teaching and Learning. If we do so, then we are able to broaden the qualifications for this position to include someone with the Kentucky Principal Certification. Currently, we have very few people within the district and actually across the state, this is becoming a statewide issue, that have the instructional supervisor certification. And if we change the title to Coordinator of Teaching and Learning, then someone with the principal certification has those qualifications to be able to do those job requirements. So I'm asking that again, there is no additional money associated with this position. It is already on our salary schedule as Ms. Jennifer Mattingly's position. We would have to just change that title if you all approve that.
I'm kind of worried.
I'm fine with that.
All in favor?
Whatever, yep.
Okay, review and approve the Mount Vernon Elementary Counselor position.
Okay, this also is not a new position. At some point historically, Mount Vernon- Um, at some point historically, Mount Vernon Elementary used, their site-based council moved to use a teacher position as a counselor. Um, they have been in that role for many, many years as a teacher position. Um, Senate Bill One, um, as all of you all know, the school safety bill, um, requires us to move towards a two hundred and fifty to one ratio. So two hundred and fifty students to one counselor ratio. We all know how important that is. Um, in order for us to count that on our state reporting that Mr. Repert does, we need to show that we have a counselor position at Mount Vernon Elementary, not a teacher position. So this is not a new position, it's just shifting what we already have in place, but of course, that takes more approval to do so.
And then we're not creating another new teacher position behind that, it's just shifting from one title to the other.
Exactly. Yeah, no, no funds associated with this. This is just to clarify that, yes, she is a counselor, and we can count that.
And have the coverage.
Yes.
Is there a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Don't move.
No, well, I, I have a question, Larry. Another time you talk all night, I, I have a question.
You can blame that if I'm in there on me.
Uh, is there any other, like, for that counselor position, is there any, uh, besides having a teacher's certificate, is there anything else that is required of them?
They have to have a counselor's certification.
A counselor's certification, okay, I was just curious. That was, that was my curiosity, okay?
Yes, right now.
Everyone okay with that? All right, a motion by Larry in a second by Angie, all in favor?
Yeah.
Item L, review and approve the Rockcastle County Middle School agricultural teacher position with a seven extended days.
Okay, again, this is not a new position either. Um, we currently have an agri-science position at Rockcastle County Middle School that is vacant right now, um, due to a, another retirement and another teacher has, has shifted into that position. Um, I'm coming and asking the board not to create a new position, but to add seven extended days to that position so that our students have the opportunity to attend, um, the middle school FFA camp, which is three days, to exte, to attend the state convention, which is two days. And for this teacher that we hired to, um, attend their professional development, that is required in that agriculture position for two days. So that's seven days attached that, to that position, giving our students those opportunities to attend all of those activities.
And you had told us every child goes through this program at the middle school.
It's in the, it's in the rotation of,
That's awesome, yeah.
The encore rotation.
That's great.
And I keep, I love that question. Uh, agri-science, you say?
It is agri-science, but if we a, a, add the seven additional days when we post this job, then we can post it as a certified agriculture teacher position. And then we can create that certified FFA program at the middle school that will feed directly into our high school program. So the only additional need we have to do that is those seven extended days.
And then with that, like, turning into an aim teacher position, it doesn't warrant the two forty like the high school position?
No, it does not. It can, it's, it's, they recommend ten to twenty days, extended days. But in doing further research, we can get by with seven. That's just the bare minimum that we can get by with. Be good opportunities for our kids.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right. Review and approve Rockcastle County Schools Trauma Plan. Mr. Marcus, you've been waiting for this for hours, so you know what you're going to say?
We had brought up the shop.
Yes.
And, I think.
Oh, what was that? Well, the E N is after E M.
I thought you were.
We're at E M, I thought you said E N, sorry.
No, she's.
I was thinking we already went past them.
I was gonna let, I was gonna let Mr. Repert talk.
Sorry, Mr. Repert.
That's all right. It has been a long night. I, I want to say, um, first, uh, thank you all for your vote of confidence for Ms. Carrie. I echo the sentiments of, of Dr. Carter. Nobody works harder than she does, and, and we see it every day. And her passion for students, I, I appreciate your vote of confidence for her. Um, she's, she's a wonderful leader, and I can't say enough good things about her, so I appreciate, appreciate that very much. Um, also, I want to, uh, I think you all know Ms. Jessica Dolan, she's here tonight, she's our district nurse.
I did not know you. It's nice to meet you.
So I'm glad she's here tonight, and she's here at ten forty-one, so I appreciate her being here tonight. Um, of course, she does her telehealth service, she orchestrates that for all of our schools, and you voted to extend that contract to our elementary schools. So we're so excited about that and that expansion, and she does a, she does a great job of that. Leading our, leading our, our nurses in our, our school staff, so.
Now, where are you located at?
My office is at the middle school.
Okay.
Yeah, but then I do rounds throughout the county as well. So if you see me out and about, I'm usually going to the high school, you know, all the elementaries, and I try to kind of check in with everybody.
Thank you.
But we're excited to offer the telehealth services to the elementary schools next year.
That's going to be great.
Had to say those two things before we get to the trauma plan, so, um, if you look at the, at your, um, your file there, you can see our trauma plan, of course, with Senate Bill One, as Ms. Bowser's referenced. It's called the School Safety and Resili, Resiliency Act, so when you look at the document, you'll see that SSRA, and that's all it stands for. So there's five components to that, five pieces that we have to have included in this trauma plan. It does have to be approved by local boards of education by, uh, July first of this year, according to that law. And so essentially, what we did, I met with our counselors, and we, we come up with, with this plan to address these five, um, bullet points. I'm going to very quickly go over those with you. Enhancing trauma awareness throughout the school. Um, these are things, obviously, next year that we're going to do. This will be a fluid document that we will, uh, change as the years go by. Um, as we talked about, Ms., you all approved at the last board meeting, Ms. Molly Hudgens to come and, and do just a very, very basic training for all of our staff. Uh, Ms. Angie Payne, our school-based mental health coordinator, is attending a two-day, actually, three-day training in Corbin, a bounce training, and she's going to become a trainer, a certified trauma-informed trainer, and she will train all of her staff. She's going to go to all her schools, uh, assisting, assisted by our school counselors, to train all of our staff to look for signs of trauma within students. And of course, this is all part of the tier one plan. Don't let that confuse you, that just means it's school-wide. Every student's going to have access to these strategies and these practices, and you can see the, the timeline for that as well. Um, all students also this year will undergo a screener at the beginning of the year, a mental health screener. And that will help us to identify students that need more targeted resources, and so that's where tier two will come in.
Every child will go through that, okay.
We're going to send home, uh, the parent permission for that.
Sure.
Uh, but if parents give permission, they will undergo this screener so that we can, uh, assess them. And our mental health coordinator and our school mental health advocate, the position that you all approved last board meeting, they will work together to, um, go through those, those screeners and, and determine those students that have additional needs. And so then those students would be tier two, and possibly tier three, depending on where they're at. That's the, that's the first part there, awareness of, of the school community. Part B, conducting an assessment of school climate, uh, that's a requirement of the, of the law. And so Ms. Bowser earlier mentioned the importance of, of survey data. Um, we're going to survey our staff and our students about, uh, trauma in school safety. It goes hand in hand. And so, uh, those, the, the climate survey will be given to students by October twenty twenty, well, it's different than the screener. The survey will ask questions like, are school rules fair? Uh, have you ever experienced bullying? Um, do you feel safe at school? Those are just some sample questions that all students and actually staff will answer. And so then, once they take that survey, our trauma teams, every school has a trauma team. Those teams will look at that data and determine our weaknesses, okay? If the students are saying they don't feel safe, or they, the high, high percentages experience bullying, then our trauma teams can, uh, you know, we might, that would be a tier two intervention, but we might put a, uh, something in place before we do a, uh, uh, have a school speaker come in and talk about bullying. There's just things that we could do to address those issues that come up by that survey. Um, C says developing trauma-informed discipline policies. We talked about PBIS, uh, Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. We started that at the middle school. Uh, Mr. Phillips, I don't know if he's still here or not, but he's, his team, we have a middle school team, and they've done a tremendous job going through all that training. They're going to implement that, uh, staff-wide in August at our PD. I was just talking today, Broadhead is, is next up on the list. Mr. Dex is very excited about doing that at Broadhead. He's already formed his team, and we're scheduling for them to go, undergo PBIS training. PBIS is a consistent positive approach to behavior. Um, it's, it's nationwide, it's research-based, it's just a different approach to, to discipline. And we think it'll be very effective in assisting our students, uh, and our teachers in dealing with, uh, students that have behavior issues. It's looking at it through a different lens, looking at, at students who have a behavior issue. Maybe it's because they had a traumatic event, and so it's, it's helped, it helped, it helped our teachers to train them with dealing with those issues. Um, then if you look at the other component there, part D deals with the Handle With Care notification. Ms. Bowser mentioned that in her presentation as well. Handle With Care is an initiative through the Kentucky State Police, where if a student experienced a traumatic event, those police officers can check a box, and then Ms. Bowser gets a text, I get a text, and the school principal gets a text, and all it says is handle this student with care. Uh, they had an interaction with police last night. And so once that happens, then we notify, uh, those teachers, we notify those trauma teams, and those students automatically become a tier two because they've had a traumatic event. Uh, so we, we've signed up for that, we've had that all year. That's ongoing. Of course, it's a statewide requirement, and we've done a little more than that, too. We also have our bullying form, online harassment form. Um, the, the city police has worked with us on that in terms of assisting with law enforcement with some of those issues when needed, and that has come up from time to time. Uh, so not only are we doing Handle With Care, we've also got this other notification system to let us know when students have an issue. The last component is providing services programs designed to reduce the negative impact of trauma, support critical learning, and foster a positive and safe school environment for every student. We're going to begin mindfulness instruction techniques next year. It's going to be part of our instruction curriculum. We've not adopted anything yet, um, but we know, we know that, that all of our students, um, could benefit by being exposed to mindfulness techniques, uh, techniques that help them deal with their emotions, techniques that help them, um, know when to, when to calm down, and when they get upset, how to, how to deal with that. And so, uh, we're working with our principals to develop that curriculum and the best way to, to present that to our students. So that's, that's part of that, that plan. Uh, again, I mentioned the screener, uh, we talked about, uh, some of those, the survey that we're going to be doing. We're also, uh, this would be a tier two intervention, providing targeting counseling for students that, that have, uh, for instance, uh, children, uh, whose parents are addicted to drugs, or children who live with a grandparent. So we're, we're going to have group sessions for those students, and again, uh, Ms. Angie Payne, our school mental health coordinator, is, is heading that. We also applied for a grant through our Friskies, a gear two grant. We hope that we'll get that. If we do, then we've planned a lot of family engagement nights, uh, as part of that, that grant. And, and we believe that we'll get that. It's through our Frisky, and, and they've all worked together, uh, with us to, to write that grant. But for instance, uh, a family cooking night in conjunction with Rockcastle Extension Office. And that would be a tier two invention, uh, intervention for those students and those families that have had a traumatic event, to provide an opportunity for them to, to have a, a night where they will come together and cook a meal. And the Extension Office has been great to, to help us with that. The Rockcastle Arts Association, um, I've, I've, you know, Ms. Carrie Mullins quite a bit, and she's been very supportive with us in having a family arts night where they might do a sculpture, they might do a canvas, and this is for those students that, uh, had experienced a traumatic event. And how, and we may be able to open that up to, to all students, but certainly those that, that are in the tier two that have been identified by our screener, or that we've identified by Handle With Care notification. So all these activities, and I don't want to read through all of them, but there's several things that we've got planned next year uh, for interventions for those families. And then finally, uh, having a check and connect mentor program for those students, and again, that's a tier two or a tier three intervention for those students that, uh, that need a mentor, that needs someone, um, that, that they can talk to. That's not necessarily a, a guardian or a teacher, but someone they can reach out to, to, to have a connection with. We piloted that a little bit at the middle school this year, um, and it, it was, it was successful. Of course, it was a COVID year, so, uh, our interactions weren't, uh, especially in January and February, what we'd like for them to be. Uh, but we helped expand that next year as part of this program, too, just so these students that are tier two or tier three can have someone that they can, they can talk to. Um, do you all have any questions? I didn't get, there's other tier two and tier three interventions that are listed there, but I know we're, it's late. If you all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I don't have any questions whatsoever, and I know it's late, but I don't want to miss the opportunity to say thank you to our school counselors. And I mean, our school counselors are amazing heroes, and the work that they do, and Ms. Angie Payne is amazing. And I know that Mr. Repert has been, been, and Ms. Angie have been meeting with our school counselors. They've done an intense amount of work to draft this, and, and they've, and they've not, yes, it is a state requirement, but they have taken time to make this meaningful for Rockcastle County schools, and when, it's not just something written on paper. We're committed to providing these services to our students, so thank you, and thank you to all our counselors for that work.
It's sad, but the need for this is escalating.
I think it will continue to do so, too.
But thank you, I know.
That's the shortest presentation that you've given.
I was trying to go through, I, I probably.
Man, when it gets eleven o'clock, it's sleepy.
You probably saved it over there.
Marcus, thank you so much.
I think Angie has some, uh, question.
I do not.
We need to, uh, motion to approve this trauma plan.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
I, we did an amendment and added a five N, which was review, or review the current contract to discuss termination with Teresa Combs, who is our board attorney. And when we, I think it was just, we discussed that we are going to table that to another time, correct? And let that be a topic of conversation. So with that being said, that is going to be, uh, maybe something that we can put on the agenda, Ms. Carrie. Item six is review the superintendent's personnel action report. This was something that everyone had on their drive to look at.
You all will take just a second to review that, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Item six B, review the first reading of the KSBA twenty-one, twenty-two policy and procedures. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, we have to have two readings before we actually approve. You've probably been given all of those, and that is such that, uh, take the time to read all hundred and some pages of it, or however many it is, and if you have any questions, call Carrie.
Yes, if you have questions or anything that you would like to see modified or changed, please let me know that ahead of time so we can make those changes and then bring that back to you for a second reading.
Item fi, six C, review the first reading of the twenty-one, twenty-two employee handbook. Uh, I went through it, it looked, there's not any changes, but the same thing goes for that. If you have any questions, contact Ms. Carrie for that. Item six D, review the first reading of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year coaches handbook. Same procedure.
Procedure. Again, these are all KSBA, um, drafted documents, but if you have any questions, please let me know. We'll address it.
Item seven is department reports.
Those are in your uploaded. If anybody has any questions, our department heads are here, and we'll be happy to answer anything.
If I have any questions, I will call you. At another time.
Angie, could you read those through?
What? I can, Larry, if you want.
I'll take it back.
I was saying, I figured you would. All right, item eight is our superintendent communications.
Um, I just want to say thank you. I'm honored to serve Rockcastle County schools. I appreciate everyone who joined us tonight, both in person and online. Um, I appreciate that, I appreciate that support. Um, and I'm honored. Thank you to the board for what, for the contract extension, and, and I, and I, I'm just humbled by the opportunity. So thank you very much.
Item nine is our board comments.
I have none.
No. I always have something positive to say, right?
Sure.
Quickly. Are y'all okay with that?
Yeah.
Um, the graduation was the first graduation that I got to attend to last year, you know, COVID. Um, and it, it just reminded me as a graduate, which doesn't seem that long ago, but it really was. Um, but just all the stakeholders, all the teachers, um, even my bus driver was a mentor to me. Um, I had a favorite janitor at my middle school. I still remember his name, like, just, that brought joy. And I just want to appreciate every staff member. Um, no matter what you do, you make a difference in the lives of children, no matter what position that you hold. Um, I started to mention earlier, I just want to say real quick, you had mentioned about, like, the struggle between third and fourth grade and, um, students. I can't remember exactly what you said, like, there's something.
It's been a day ago now.
It has been.
I have to pull it back up.
But, um, self-esteem and self-confidence in children is my passion. Um, and I've done so many presentations in schools where it's at that age nine for girls, a little bit older for boys, but at that age nine for girls, that self-esteem peaks. And the more that we talk about, I will always support mental health, anything counselors, anything extra that we can do for kids to, to, because my motto is if you prevent and you help prepare these kids to face, because my motto is if you prevent and you help prepare these kids to face, even in kindergarten, you know, they can get, they can learn the use of powerful words, positive words. Like if you prevent, then you're not trying to fix as much as what you were talking about earlier. So I just wanted to um say that if there's anything I can ever do, that's my heart and passion. I would love to to do anything that I could with that. Um and just wanted to say like, I know I'm not, I don't know who's in the rain, there's people in the back, I don't know who you are, but um I have really, it's been an honor to work with the administration staff that in this board. I I have watched you during, I'm saying this since we just finished the school here, right? Um but I have watched you guys love on kids. Um I know what other districts around us have done and you all have went above and beyond. Um I appreciate you feeding kids, leaving your office and feeding kids and and truly um putting them first, so. And I just want to, Ms. Bowser was my, both of my children's first grade teacher. Um and her love for children was so great then and like it was obvious and not uncommon at all for kids who needed more TLC to be in her classroom. And that was for a purpose and I'm just um excited to work with you. I mean, it it still shows that kids is your heart, never lose that, no matter what obstacle you face, you just keep putting your face forward and um continuing in your hard work. And I I think Rockcastle County, it's a great place to be for teachers, for students. Like um I see the potential for things to move forward and to rise on many levels um without losing the heart of who Rockcastle County is. I seen a teen the other day working at Climax Water and like he's a good old country boy, you know? And I'm like, man, that's Rockcastle and but there there's so many opportunities that are growing for kids here. So I'm I'm just a proud, I'm really proud to be a part of what you guys are doing for kids.
Ms. Anna, do you have anything?
I loved your presentation tonight, thank you so much, I really enjoyed it. Mr. Bishop, thank you for your time, your children, loved it. All the new faces here tonight, we welcome you back at any time. Love you being here, come join us.
I was I was going to elaborate on that, Ms. Emily, Cynthia, if if you work at Roundstone, would you stand up so that or if your child goes to Roundstone? Listen, uh like I said before, Roundstone has always been a special school, but thank you all are what makes it special.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Uh with that being said, uh the only other thing I would say is we, like Ms. Anna said, we thank you for coming. We thank you for uh supporting Rockcastle County schools, we thank you for supporting Rockcastle County kids. And um I for one, never take for granted any decision that I make being anything itself, that's what I feel is best for kids. And um I know that these folks that are here on this board, uh we all love kids.
That's why we're here.
That's the reason everybody in this building does.
No other agenda for it.
So uh we thank you for coming and with that, I need a motion to adjourn. Angie's ready. Thank you all for staying all night.